We talked about you this month, but then when we got.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Will everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We are on reading of mission statement and priority. Four, I will do it today. So the mission of the Wintersett Community School District, we will empower a community of lifelong learners who strive for personal excellence through meaningful relationships and real world authentic learning experiences. And strategic priority four, build strong authentic relationships among students, staff, and community members. Conflict of interest declaration, does anybody have anything they need to declare a conflict with tonight? I don't see any, so we will move on. Next up is approval of the agenda. Cam, anything? No changes? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Motion by Tim, is there a second? Second by Malcolm, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Visitors communications from the public, I don't see any visitors or anybody wanting to speak. Hi Sam. Anybody back there? Okay, well go on to information only, building level reports. Corey, you running this or am I running this? Just gonna go down the list?
Let's just start, yeah, let's start with elementary because Cam is last and he's got a long.
Start with Doug and work our way to the high school. Perfect.
All right. You've got more.
We can do this. We all, we're all just a little needy today.
All right. Just quick, our one thing and I had a couple things, a lot of times coming here talking about things we're gonna do, we're gonna do, we're gonna do. And I thought you'd show you just. Sometimes the spur of the moment things happen and turn out really well.
Oh, I have. Yeah, you might, if it's your first one plugged in, you might have to mess with the settings and stuff like that. Cause it might be like somewhere.
Further on the side, you know? I can hold it up and just show you guys. The old school. Here, look at this. Overhead projector.
Now we're talking about, there were lots of overhead slides.
Starting to resonate now.
Right Sam? Lots of slides.
I said that the other day and some of the teachers looking like, what are those? Back over still regular stone. I just not want to go, so that's okay. All right, anyway. We had a request with some first graders. They walked up and said, Mrs. Enos, Mrs. Enos, we need some more footballs for playground. And we said, we've got like 10 of them up there, but they're too big. So she thought, okay, what do I do about this? And she said, well. Why don't you do some research on that? Tell me why you need bigger ones or smaller footballs? And how much are you gonna cost them, where we can get them from? So that's what they did and they came up with a presentation. For new footballs. To Mrs. Enos. Which was really cool. And they said, here's the problem, our footballs are too big. The foam ones have holes and the blue ones are too flat. They're too hard to throw, you can't hold them in the hand, they blow away in the wind. So those were our problems. All request access. They had videos on here.
Of playing football recess?
They had, yep, they had a big football, they tried to throw it and fall on his hand and then they had the ones they want, they threw it and went a lot farther. It was great. Here's the ones they would like. The footballs, okay, these are the ones that are the right size for our hands, they fit just right. And then where do you find them? How do we solve that problem? They're on Amazon, of course, because Amazon has everything for just $14.97 a football. And then if we had those, they gave us other options to target, a little more expensive and then Walmart, a little more expensive. But then they, so they came and gave us this presentation, said, this is the preferred one because of its laces and the leather. I mean, they, they went through it all. And did a great job. Here are cheaper lesser options, just in case the school couldn't afford the big ones or the good ones.
These are right up Kami's alley.
Literally called the Duke, the one they liked the most, but it was $45 and probably too expensive. So they did, and then they presented that and it's like, okay guys, who came up that, can we buy three of the total $60? So that was their presentation, it was just kind of that authentic learning in action, right? If you had a problem, how are you gonna solve it? And then we talked about using technology and I'll try to turn this up the best I can.
Perfect.
Mrs. Bean had the class doing. Podcasts. So we'll listen to just a couple seconds and they, these were pretty darn scripted, but she said, I'm starting out with this. And then we're gonna move on and just kind of play some talking, so we'll just kind of go from there. Maybe.
My name is Harper, what's your name?
Hi, I'm Amy.
Great, can you tell me about your personal narrative? What did you choose to share?
Sure, I choose to share about attention and.
That sounds interesting, why did you choose to write about this?
Because I need a time.
So they were just working on their interpersonal skills and how to talk to people.
Harper, Harper Reese.
People.
Oh, sorry. My friend Harper.
Uh, kind of great people, just kind of had those conversations, so they did that through making a podcast, so. Just a couple of examples, oh, one more example, I know what I talked about before. Here are the. The brochures, we talked about third grade making brochures for downtown and they actually hand those out downtown now. About all the stuff going on, so there we go. Thank you. Did we get them the footballs? Uh, they're in the Amazon cart, ready to go.
And I will say those brochures are a hit with the visitors to town. They love getting those from kids. They come to the museum with those and they say, look at what we got from your Chamber of Commerce, these are the most coolest things. And they always send us a set as the business, because they all came to the museum, so they sent me a set of all of them as well, so. That's awesome, they're pretty cool. Any other questions for Mr. Doug here? He wasn't my English teacher, it was. Next up, Julie.
Um, I'm just gonna talk me through my report. Probably a good choice. We are continuing with our work on strategic priority one with authentic learning and teachers, we are getting ready. The 21st, I believe it's linked up here, yeah. The 21st is when our first gold star standard project can be kicked off, sixth grade is doing, gonna be. About 18 different lessons, kids will be writing blogs. They will be cooking, they will be compiling it into a recipe book that they will then market to parents, so. I have other grade levels that are also in the, in the planning still. We are taking some time as a staff to really make sure that we understand the design rubric. So how to design a lesson in this way and then the instructional. Our hope and goal is this spring for parent teacher conferences, then it will be more of a showcase night. So kids will get to choose which project they really enjoyed and then showcasing that for the parents. So that's what we're working for towards the spring. Strategic priority number two. As we are planning, it just. With our. Project lessons and with our. Just our day to day. We are having those conversations around what profile of a graduate skill we want to target or focus on. So that is getting what can include more of our curriculum documents. For us at the middle school, strategic priority number three, we're expanding opportunities for students to develop self-worth and connection. That continues to be a focus, but it's also becoming more and more just how we do business at the middle school. So that would be our capturing kids' hearts. Area and I will share this board report with you, I included our start strong survey. So that survey just is four simple questions, asking teachers like. Are you greeting students? And they just mark themselves, yes, no. Do you do good things in your classroom? Again, just kind of some of those bedrocks of the program, we scored really high for when we did this this year. We're 4.8, 4.7, 4.9, our lowest was a 3.9 and that was with our launch. So teachers have really worked on, what does it look like to inspire kids to act when we're wrapping up the lesson? So we've talked about more, more ways to do that. And then in the last one, again, I will send this to you, we are still. The building. Well, it was important to continue with our memorable moments and kids' connection to, to school. And we find out that by taking a survey every month. And really, we just ask kids to point to, what's a connection you've made at school? Or what's a memorable moment we've had at school? The, this past month. So I had a summary there for the month of August, we don't do it, we do it in September. Homecoming was a big one that was named. We had a water balloon and Skittle experiments. We had an all about me project that was referenced. We had. So our goal is 98% of our kids will be able to point to a memorable moment. That's our overall year goal, right now the building is sitting at 87%. So we have a scoreboard for teachers to look at and, and then we can also go in and see, okay, who didn't give us an answer? Or who gave us an answer that doesn't necessarily count as a memorable moment? And then we have those conversations, how we connect, how can we connect with those kids? Just some upcoming things at the middle school, we have D O coming in this week to talk to fifth grade about safety and natural disasters. Parent teacher conferences and then our annual morphology balloon parade will be in November. So you're always welcome to come in and see the things that are happening in the building.
Any questions for Julie? All right, thank you, Mr. Sussman.
Thank you. Um, we are preparing for strategic priority one, increasing student opportunities, integrated role focus, education-based learning. Ensure all students are college, career, and life ready. We are putting the final touches on our career day snapshot, which is Thursday, October 24th. We confirmed with 16 local employers, 10 of which will be middle or the seventh graders. We're doing some basic core exploration, we'll be rotating between 10 classrooms being those local employers. And our eighth graders will be doing. 可能会be engaged in presentations focused more on our profile of a graduate. So the employers have been instructed to create a presentation that talks about how they leverage those specific skills in their day-to-day operations. We also have. 12 eighth graders, we're gonna be interviewing those six employers about the profile of graduate skills. So we put together a video that highlights those people and how these skills are utilized. In the day-to-day operations. Strategic party two, integrating 21st century skills. We're actively planning our authentic learning showcase. For March 4th, which will be one of our nights of conferences. Where kind of the middle school students will take a project or projects that they've done this year that are authentic. And do the public product portion of it and present on it to our community members. So we're, we're working through the logistics of that, what that'll look like. Spoke with a gentleman named Nolan Boaz of West Moynan Toastmasters today. He came in last year and did a public speaking workshop for our eighth graders, looking to expand that this year. Prior to the authentic learning showcase and get kids more of a hands-on experience to really. Present senior projects or part of the projects and then get feedback from, he's looking at, talking to him today. We're thinking we need six to eight clinicians who will come in and listen and get feedback on the presentation. So they're more prepared for the public presentation during the authentic learning showcase. So still working through the details of that, I think that can be pretty powerful to get kids. Like feedback in the moment and how they can improve local experts in the field of. Going to strategic priority three, expanding opportunities for students to develop self-worth in connection to others. I wanna go back to something we did at junior high. On Friday, the 20th of homecoming, we had something we coined ISOP, Iowa School of Pancakes. This was to be, the intention was to create a tradition for the junior high or homecoming. So. The day was a day of fun, started with myself. Mr. St. John, Mrs. Alexander and Mr. Gross came by and helped, we cooked 800 pancakes for the students. And this newcomer, his name also helped serve. And so students, when they got to school, it was kind of supposed to be some surprise and delight, I think the word got to them a little bit. But we had four tables set up in the junior high parking lot, we ran every kid through, they got pancakes. Got to hang outside for a bit. And then at lunch, we did a tailgate lunch where we served about 400 hot dogs. In like half an hour, so. The goal being really trying to lead into this idea of memorable moments and surprise and delight. And to have school be a place that kids want to be and they'll remember these types of things and it's. A positive experience to them. In the process of. Planning a community service project, this relates to strategic priority three as well. Looking back to the historical complex and do some fall cleanup there. And then I shared with you guys as well. Best junior high in Iowa, that's, that's a big goal for us this year, a big theme, so we're pushing with kids. That if you're part of something special, a person who's great, it connects us and it balances together. And we also have a collective responsibility to follow those, those norms, those expectations. So I gave this school code to you, I don't know if you guys have access to it. You'll see that percentage of kids with C minus to above, it says 70% here. That actually popped up over the weekend, it's at 82%. So we're getting close. I think we're both, so that's, that is good to see. That kids are buying into this idea and doing their part to be a school, to give you grades instead of trouble and to earn difference made dollars. And then strategic priority four, build strong authentic relationships. Kind of touch on. Being intentional at CKH and implementing fidelity, we are wrapping up our CKH House Cup. Tomorrow's last day, where we are. Implementing the Excel model with fidelity and reflecting scores. And then this Friday, the winning House Cup teams in the seventh grade get a lunch cooked. For their efforts on implementing CKH and then monitoring their scores.
That's good to know, so I know where to be Friday.
Your grill's there. Any questions?
Anything for Mr. Sussman? Keep up the good work, all right. Cam, Mr. Smith?
He's got the longer one tonight.
So I gave you guys packets or three different, creative things, or at first with just the strategic plan. High school wrote down first, but strategic priority one, we're working on, continue to work on the college career life for any. Report card for our students and what that looks like. Scott Dryer unfortunately backed out of his program, so he wasn't leading instructional rounds, however, we, we conducted those anyway today. At the high school, looking at higher order tasks, higher order questions. Focusing on what we're asking kids to do in the classroom, how we're asking them to think, what we're asking them to. Actually do, so good morning, that's some good data collecting, good conversation regarding observations. We developed steps for improvement in the areas. That we talked about. What we'll probably do, since Scott's not driving this, I'll probably just go to two times a year instead of every month. So we'll look again in March, but in talking to Julie. Doug might expand that into elementary and middle school. Just as a way to. Get in the classroom and see what we're doing there. Construction students are in the process of finishing Mr. Gross's shed. Actually, I think we have the floor inch cleaned out today, we made, we made it, we were really nervous about that part of it.
Happened to our shed.
The rest of it.
Your shed or my shed or, you just shed or, like, who's shed? There's a.
It is a little bit big for a trailer, is that what the, what the deal was?
There's a lot of, a lot of straps. And we made it. So there's. I don't know if you've been home yet. There's a work trailer there, close to your home. So we're, we're completing that, nothing like hands-on activities. Complete that, so. Also our coffee shop, Husky Brew, and Mr. Gross put that on the board update, that's up and running right now. So FPLA is running that. Trying to work on some different. Ways of collecting money. Adrian's reached out to PME to get some of that stuff. Making, baking and pastries was making, they were making snacks that were healthy kid approved. However, nobody was buying. We were spinning through the, spinning through the shelf life, so. There, there you go. Also.
I know this is great.
On the authentic learning passing experiences, so for example. It's Thursday this week, I know Dennis has a group of government students that are presenting the Legion, Legion lunch. Around the Electoral College and the importance of the Electoral College, so giving them a chance to share that information. That's, that's one example. Strategic priority two, advisory calendar, I thought, wrote this on your, I didn't. Monthly meetings are going well, we're, we're implementing habits of effective teens. So Covey's work each month, we go through a different habit, trying to talk with kids and understand about. You know, future planning, have skills for success, so this month was habit two, begin with the end in mind and start a reverse plan. About what you want people to say about you when you're done. Not, not about your money, but you know, it's your funeral, how you wanted to talk about you. So it's sometimes it hits kids in the middle, the middle of the eyes when you do those things. Continue to do our student tours, stay among campuses workplace, de-cap score, we've got that. I've attached that, that's a whole different, it's one that looks like this. So we increased our score for the district from like seven to 20. Which is a good score, there's still a lot of developing's in there, but we actually have a meeting tomorrow. As a reminder to those involved. To up this, to look at our developing and go. So we're making progress in this, but ID cap is just basically showing how we're, how we're planning, helping kids plan for their future. Starting all the way around the elementary. Let's see, strategic priority three. Homecoming week went well, a lot of students participating in activities. Pepperdale Parade Dance, we're all well attended, 450 tickets sold to the dance. Yep, limited, limited issues there, but pretty good. Football, human volleyball as part of senior week, just wrapped up too on the 6th and October 9th. Again, another opportunity for kids to get together, interact with one another, again, pretty successful time. Marching band, I, I put them in there because of how much time you get to spend together in Omaha and Des Moines and everywhere else, but. They're doing fantastic. So took fourth in Omaha, first in Ella, second on Saturday, Valley Fest. And then we have mid, mid Iowa championships, state marching. On Saturday, so this is a big day for them. This week, Saturday, but they're having a great year. And I know there's a lot of people that invest a lot of time and effort into that, so it's really neat to see the kids having a good experience. We completed CKH walkthroughs for the fall, continue to see good things going on in the classroom, having social contact posted and kids making good connections. And then probably the last one for that, high school staff had an opportunity to look at the John Height. I, I'm saying it right, video, had great discussions about cell phones in schools. What that means, what that looks like for our kids. Then we have a plan after term one finals as we start to share that information with our kids during advisory time. On the 28th and 29th, giving students an opportunity to provide feedback. Strategic priority four, building strong authentic relationships, we have senior parking spots have been completed. Again, another fun activity for them, no issues, kids have been pretty good. All the money that we raised goes to McFable Farms, so after we pay for the paint, pay for the brushes. It's part of our student council project to give back to the community. We chose McFable Farms, it's, it's a place where a lot of our students actually go throughout the year. Councilors are in the process of creating a college and military and trades night that we're gonna run on December 4th, which is our high school parent teacher conferences. So it actually corresponds well with BAFSA kicking off, which will also happen in December. So parents can come in, they can talk to different colleges that are there. They can talk to the military branches and understand jobs there, but then also get help with BAFSA if they need it. They work with Mr. Gross on a, maybe possible partnership with View Scholarships. With View, basically it's, we would be able to share student information with this company. They would run it through a scholarship database, they would create a individual list of all scholarships. That our kids are already eligible for, merit-based, based on their, on their ACT scores and their GPA. To schools that maybe kids haven't thought of before, and right now it's mostly Missouri, Kansas, a few in Nebraska, a few in Iowa. That every student could have a. Piece of paper with a QR code that said, here's your scholarships, without you even applying. So that in conjunction with the College Night, in conjunction with BAFSA. All those things are opportunities for our kids to see something. That's possible out there, so. Mock interviews, past Friday, we conducted, I know Justin, or Mr. Gross put that in the. Board presentation, but yeah. We had kids that were successfully completing interviews and each year they've gotten better in doing it. So the sophomores this year did a great job, being able to answer questions. We talked to them about why this is important, not only for a job, but for scholarships and going to college or. Or other branches, so. The last one for authentic relationships, our drive-in movie that the FFA conducted in the middle school parking lot. Over Cover Bridge, pretty successful, thank you to Julie for letting us host there. Just very loved it there by the way, so. We'll be reaching out next. Some specific things coming up, dates are significant, again, you guys, I. Love to have you out there, but obviously free, yeah, free invitation, all this stuff. But we host Rockford River Conference Cross Country tomorrow at Lakeview. Guys wanna come on, it's a pretty neat deal. Yeah, really fun environment. I put calendar committee meetings there on October 16th, that's just, that's just the highlight for us, you know, that's coming down the fight. And then as our seasons end.
Calendar meeting. It's a big one.
One we look forward to.
Yep, I didn't say that. But, senior night's also coming up, so Thursday, we've got our volleyball senior night against ADM. And then Friday, football with DCG, we're gonna do our senior nights for band, cross-country, and cheerleading. Don't think I'm missing anybody on those nights, and then we start our first round stuff, that's coming up really quick. So we will have a Veteran's Day program in there, Josh and Julie and I need to make sure we get our dates down, so I didn't include it in this, but. It'll be here before we know it too. So anyway, there's that stuff. Good, so the last one. Last paper, this is the one that Corey and I will probably kind of share some information on, work-based learning playbook. So the work-based learning playbook is, is basically a place for us, and I guarantee the paper, so the hyperlegs are really useless for that. Wanted to share with you anyway, this is, this is what we're doing in the area of work-based learning. So the state's recently changed. The categories of work-based learning, it used to be four, now there's two, either branching to career exploration or work-based learning. When we're talking to Corey, we've decided to keep the latter, because it's kind of a good representation of. I ruined it up there last, but if you're a high schooler at Wintersett, you've got a ton of opportunities for career explorations, right? It really starts, I mean, obviously I have like authentic projects, it really starts at Husky Ready. Where you're talking about a bunch of interest profiles, gift profiles, you start to begin looking at different careers and what that, you can see if you're building a future website. Tons of classroom speakers that we bring in, they range from. You know, guys that are experts in the insurance field to marketing, from the Iowa Cubs to guys that are custom cabinet builders. To you, you name and trey as many experts as we can. This year alone, our couple of classes have done mock trials, have been in connection with lawyers to. Help them with like the process, legal process. Bringing in law enforcement officials to do, you know, CSI projects. And then walk them through how we collect data, how we collect evidence at crime scenes. So, so as much as we can bring in, we're trying to bring in to connect them with professionals. Um so, so as much as we can bring in, we're trying to bring in to connect them with uh professionals. We do college career fairs, which you guys know about, um done those. College military reps are here on a constant basis, even if we have nobody uh signed up. I think we had one school last week, they still are sitting in the office, saying hi to kids, trying to, trying to do some recruiting there uh as well. Campus tours have been going really well, uh this year I think we are gonna go to Iowa, which has always been kind of a stretch to get there. Do the tour and get back in a school day.
It's easy two hundred fifty minutes.
Four thirty in the afternoon too, I'm sure.
Uh so, so we're doing more and more of those, uh we've had kids uh that have asked for like. Very specific tours, if we can line something up for like a UNO that we haven't normally gone to or. Or something that might be out of the way, um we'll kind of weigh in how much. Interest we have before we take them versus having mom that take. So Iowa learns, those are my, oh job shadows, um we've got a bunch of students that are doing job show experiences through like MLC. Isa Haynes, college bio class, every student is doing a job shadow and somehow tying it into biology. Which, yeah, can be sometimes a stretch of that, but they're doing that. Um other career explorations, we have a bunch of mentoring that's going on. You know, at the middle school, peer-to-peer mentoring, touring. Our mock interviews, which I explained to you guys on Friday that we did. Personal inventories, professional skills workshops, you know, so even like Josh is bringing in the face match, toastmasters, sorry, toastmasters. Um right, as a professional skill workshop, so that's teaching them how to publicly speak, those sorts of things. We resume writing and building, not only in IJAG, uh in different classes like that, but in our English curriculums. Service learning is like with senior. Help day, FFA, food drives, coat drives, Y teen is collecting things for Florida. Yeah, we name and we have it. So anyway, this is, this is really just around this. For you guys to understand what it is that we're doing, that goes on every day and it doesn't look. I said right away, it's a big net and we catch a lot of fish in it, it's just not always the same path for everybody, so. MLC, uh for example, something that might work at Authentic Greetings. Uh the cash register, they're getting work skills there, even if that's not their future employment. They've already, they're seeing that works, because we're going in there. Yeah, and ultimately. You know, being registered apprenticeship, we want industry-recognized. Uh certificates, so right now we offer one in CNA. Um we've been talking about Bushup, certification, what that looks like. Uh we'll have uh industry-recognized credential through cybersecurity when we're done. Yeah, just thinking of how we expand that and give our kids those tools to kind of separate them from. From others when they're in the employer race and looking at good jobs.
And this process gives the ability to warehouse a lot of these resources and a lot of these processes, because that's one of the things we really wanted to capture is like. Who does what, because there's lots of moving parts and there's lots of people involved. And so that way we wanted to make this as turnkey as possible for staff, so if they wanna job shadow, here's what to do, here's who to contact, here are the forms, here's what to do, you know. Here's what the process is and things like that, and we had this ready to go for last month. And literally the Wednesday before the Monday board meeting, our state did an update with like thirty things in it, and like six of them down was state redefines work-based learning. And so it's, instead of all of it being work-based learning, what they used to do. Is so they've divided it into two, and it's this idea of learning to work, working to learn and. Exploration and then work-based learning, and so what our state is really calling work-based learning. Is the actual onsite for a significant period of time, and then everything else is exploration, which is still important. But they redefined like what that's going to be called, and that pertains to like coding classes and things like that. And so we get credit for work-based learning coursework and things like that too for our school performance profile, and so it just has some implications with some of those things.
Along this line, I know IJAG, I mean standalone class, does a lot of these things. Uh as far as work-based learning, and we're talking with, this meeting with London today, and we're almost. We're almost certain, starting second semester, we're gonna be able to offer college credit. To students that are taking IJAG, so they're gonna take a one oh five, one thirty and one fifty course. So if they took IJAG, we could possibly get up to four college credits.
IJAG's partnered with DMAC, so they can be considered concurrent enrollment coursework for IJAG.
So go to work-based learning classes through DMAC, which. For some of our students, regardless of what they go into, they've already kind of got to step up. Through this career exploration scale.
Cam, if I shared this with you guys, I'd try and clear it out, but I will, um you dive into those links like Cam said, um a lot of these pro. Opportunities are pretty robust. You'll see some things that kids are asked to do. Um whether it's MLC or internships, things they put in place to make sure it's a viable learning experience for them, so I'll share the. They look, you can dive in some of those resources as well, so.
Yeah, any questions for? Turn it over to you there.
Yeah, thanks for, excuse me, retarded this. Yeah, I was planning on, so appreciate your understanding, um. Any other questions for Cam or Cory? Alright, so the next thing I have on the agenda is the quarterly report for the Donovan Group, so. Phil Malcolm and Jared were part of here when we went with Donovan Group, but Kim, Mary, Emily and. And Gina or Tim were, so Donovan Group does a lot of communication for districts across the state. It's a twenty-five hundred dollars a month uh cost for us, but it's unlimited services. They don't say no, I mean, you can see everything we've asked for uh during that time, this quarter and going back through December. And even some of those um emergency communication we need, I simply let them know, it's kind of the nuts and bolts, and they'll throw a. Letter back to me pretty quickly if I'm still trying to. To work in a building, so it's been a good um partnership for us, I think our building administrators utilize them quite a bit. Um you can kind of run through what we've done, or the services that we've asked them for. So far this year, and like I said, going back to December, uh October twenty-fourth, they're gonna be onsite. Uh take some more video foot, video footage, uh that we're gonna put together, so the loose system in the elementary. That's new this year, the nanamash table, which you guys have seen, and we're gonna highlight that, we're gonna try and get some cybersecurity potentially that apprenticeship. And also um do a lot around Josh's career uh exploration day. We also have six community members coming in, and gonna talk about a couple of graduate skills and capture those videos, and they'll be onsite to do that, so. Just information for you to know how we've utilized them so far, so. Any questions? Jared and Malcolm have seen this before, but.
I think it's a great investment, it's really beefed up what we have and what we're able to put out there to people.
Yeah, they, like I said, they're uh, they've done a nice job, pretty responsive, um. We kick things back at them and they, if it's not right, and they update it, get it back to us. They've been allowed to give Kendra some access, so she can go and spruce it up, if it doesn't meet Kendra's standards, so.
Needs a little more glitter.
Yeah, so.
More bit emojis.
So, uh good partnership, uh appreciate the support they give, and yeah, I think it helps. Us put our best foot out there as a district and highlight what we're doing, so. Any questions on that? Okay, the next one, uh you probably heard, uh I'm sure you heard about, and I told you about the fourteen million dollars that the state allocated. For support staff salaries, um and that was divided, you had to say you wanted to be involved. And then they divided it up on a per people basis, and then you got to decide how you're gonna divide it up among hourly staff. So Kami and I met with um Wendy Burkett, who's the representative for that association, and went through kind of this plan. Uh this is our plan of how we want to distribute that money, so we look at our calendar, the way Christmas is, with a two-week break. Hourly staff would not have gotten a check from December twenty-fourth until January twenty-fifth, because there's no hours work. So we're gonna pay some of it out in January, so they'll get a paycheck then, same thing, spring break. There's, they missed that week long of spring break, so we're giving them some then, and then the rest we paid out kind of at the end, so. Just wanted to be aware of how that worked out, um. Like, you know, we sat down and Kami threw that, I mean about that missing time, uh Wendy was responsive, so we'll get that ready to go and pay it out accordingly, so. Any questions on that?
That's a good use.
Yeah, alright.
Alright, uh consent agenda, minutes from last month's meeting, regular meeting on nine-nine. Paid bills and invoices, Kami.
Questions for me? See if there's anything that popped out that I wanted to tell you about. The audit, uh Anderson Larkin, that's our auditor, and.
Thank you, that was, that was the one I marked, I was like, why does that way sound familiar?
The audit is finished, that was a. Partial payment, the total bill is fourteen-five, that was negotiated in an RFP, and I have the final audit on my desk. I mean, drumroll, that is so early, so but we, it's still, we'll wait and put that on the December, on our annual meeting. Um let's see, anything else we have here? I mean, I made a few notes, but I don't think there's anything that jumps out.
A big CDW government software, thirteen thousand.
CDW, that is. Microsoft Office.
Okay.
That's what that was for, we needed to re-up that, it just falls a little bit different. I looked that one up too. Anything else? Twenty twenty-nine-three to Hillsaback. Was elementary exterior plaster repair, and I did move that to Pebble. That, that qualified for Pebble, and we protect general fund whenever we can. I really don't have anything else that popped out.
Waldinger eighteen thousand, or Waldinger under general, is that all?
Part of that was also moved, part of it is an actual repair of the walk-in cooler that just had to stay there, we can't move that one. Um but what I could move, I, I did, it was about twelve thousand, I was able to move.
See some of the leaks out of the. Where the water leak out behind the high school, I don't know if they can fix that or who fixed that.
I don't know, would it have been out of, if it is just, if it's a repair that puts something back to its original condition. And it meets the price threshold, we can use thirty-three and thirty-six. If it is just a maintenance, you know, keeping thing and working operation, that's general bond. So it depends upon what, what the work was and how much it was, do we have anything for them out of thirty-three or thirty-six? See, there's a Waldinger bill for thirteen-two fifty-five and thirty-six, so without looking, I'm not sure what, what repair was where. Did you have a question, Emily, I'm sorry?
I'm good, thank you.
CNT design down under nutrition with that elementary serving line, so now we can bring them out on two sides.
And by the way, it is phenomenal.
Well, the only problem is, first grade's moving a little fast. And so they're whipping through the line, and the cashier cannot keep, and there are errors being made with first grade. So we're going to have to train first grade.
Slow down.
My contacts.
Their personal skills, it'll be great.
You know, okay, they're, they're good to go.
I, I stopped in on picture day, and I know the lunch, well, the ladies, it's. Much easier to get everybody through, it's making lunch much, much faster, much easier.
Second grade is flawless, but first grade, we need to do a little bit of work, but.
They're just excited to get the lunch.
Absolutely.
Oh, they're the first.
First in.
So, okay, anything else on paid bills and invoices? Personnel reports, it's there?
Yeah, some new contracts, uh obviously, and then a couple of resignations, um I know Nick has already had a couple of applications for the, the soccer. Um usually for a couple of, kind of a week to let it run, and will conduct interviews for those two positions. Any other questions for me on that?
Open enrollment, Kami.
One is just a correction of an error, they moved out of town last year, uh students stayed in the district. And we never, then they never filed open enrollment papers, so now it's certified enrollment time, and the other district is asking, hey, we don't have paperwork on him. So one is just a correction of an error, the other is, it is mid-year. Uh it is, they've tried online, an online school, uh Clayton Ridge or uh Iowa Connections. They're not real pleased with it, and they might to open enroll here, it's mid-year, it's no good cause, I just wanna. I don't know what the board stand is on that at this time in this year of transition.
Say if we can get another kid in a seat, it's a good idea.
And so we, we've never, have we had a mid-year?
Not since they took away time.
Right, now with no, yeah.
We haven't denied anybody based on timelines since they took them away and reinstated them. Next year will probably be a little bit different situation.
Even on in?
Yeah, on ins, we've been pretty, we've pretty much stuck with.
Since my time, I gotta go back to be exact, I think it's been if they missed deadline to no good cause, there was a stance that. Wouldn't allow it, and that's kind of more, I think, reciprocal. Does that make sense? But this year. We've got past late, it's kind of like a gray spirit, and it's ultimately your decision.
I just can't remember how many in with no good cause we've had, you know, there, we very.
Those were the rules, we all played by.
Correct, we didn't accept them in because the other district usually didn't accept them out.
Yes, so we weren't accepting them in without good cause, and they weren't accepting them in without good cause, we all just kind of played by the rules.
Been a while since I've had to put that brain back into action.
And because those, those, the timelines went back in place, but parents were kind of left out.
Yeah, there was no real announcement about that.
And this child wants to come in from an online learning experience?
Yes.
And that's not good. They're a neighboring dis, they're neighboring districts, they left, so open roll into the online, that's not going well. Now they want to open roll into our district versus.
Physically open and.
Yeah, versus going back to.
Home district.
District, did speak with the original district as a case, um. They will grant it, they'll, I mean, they're not on their books this year either, does that make sense, which you'll have to. It won't be on ours either.
Yeah, they're on nobody's books.
Well, it'll be on the resident district's books. We'll get to start billing.
Right, yeah.
We'll serve and we'll bill, it's not important.
That's right, sorry.
Is there a reason the district doesn't want the kid back?
No, Malcolm, no. At least not what they shared. I did talk to superintendent, he might as well, so.
So we're gonna be approving two in. Is what your recommendation is on those, correct?
Correct.
Financial report.
I don't have a lot to share tonight, I mean, the financials are out there for you. When you look at the, the spending in relationship to the last three-year average, I mean, we're right on track. We now have our line item budget set, we have, we know what our spending authority will be for the next year. I don't see anything that needed to be pulled out, do you want me to show them to you, sorry, I'm not used to running. There's your revenue and expenditures, you can see that we're on track. Uh looking at the three-year, you know, a few things did change on spending as far as how you build open enrollment and a few other things. But those have now, they're, it's all kind of shaken out, and so now our three-year average is pretty true. And then on the statement of position. For new board members, um just keep in mind, probably the thing to look at is the difference between where we were last year at this time. And where we are today, as far as how the fund balance has changed, and if we know why. Um the other thing to keep in mind as we go into the rest of the year. Remember, ten, fund ten general, has some property tax in it, but that tax is determined by the funding formula. But it's twenty-two, it's thirty-six, and it's debt service. Those are our, our property taxes, that's where they fall.
Good, and just for those, I mean, that Malcolm was part of the decision, so was Jared, but if you look at the health, you can see how our um self-funded health is running. So.
And we have used that, we have bought down the premium uh two consecutive years in a row, and then this year we brought down the out-of-pocket. Uh deductible, not the deductible. Yeah, deductible on that. So we are still accumulating in self-funded, and we've been able to purchase better. Better benefits for the staff. And you have opportunities to get more financial knowledge. At the convention coming up, just putting in that little plug now. Questions for me on financials?
Any questions for Kami? We'll get there later on in the agenda, if somebody's gonna get appointed to be a delegate, don't worry. Contracts and agreements. Uh perspectives.
Yeah, they oversee our benefits, they guide us into self-funding, they put in help with all of the vendors that can provide our products, it's their annual renewal. And then we have a new district coming into the heart therapy, they placed a student in the therapeutic program, and so that is just the. What is that, Elkhorn?
Elkhorn, Kempton, Xyra.
Yeah. So they're coming, they're coming away, it's all.
It's a waste.
Yeah.
That is a.
So John.
How do they transport it, like, how can they transport?
I mean, I can't.
Like, I mean, but like, minute wide, I mean, is that just?
Oh, yeah, waiver. And then you can transport for services if a kid needs it, like if that's the closest.
It's a long, long. Hour and.
It's northeast of.
Yeah, hour, it's, it's a good hour thirty to Elkhorn. Hour twenty?
Oh, I mean, they can make it, yeah.
Well, we know how fast you can make it places.
Hour, yeah, it's probably hour ten, hour fifteen.
Cause Atlantic is an hour.
And do they pay that driver for the time between?
I mean, you gotta sit. I mean, that's.
So if you remember, there was a district two years ago that we ended up hiring their driver as a para where they were.
Oh, that's what they stayed in Paraforce. That's right.
Repair, para grid day for us and they got, they drove back because it was. They made essentially drive back. That was coming from southeast.
And we had one work for food service.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. They haven't asked about that yet. We'll see if that comes up. Yeah.
Okay. Um, any questions on either of the contracts? Okay, next up, term one, early graduates.
Oh, no.
That's still there.
Oh, sorry.
No, so I provided you the list for the grads. Uh, again, for the other workers, uh, we used to just get a list. Um, we made a change. By Jared and Malcolm on the board five years ago. Asked for this application and then the letter. I'd encourage you to read the letters. It kind of gives you some insight on what kids are planning to do. Um, a lot of them want to get a jumpstart on college savings or you know, gap year to save money. So, um, anyway, they've met their, they will meet their graduate skirmish, but even term one and they're seeking to be early grads.
Any questions on those? I mean, it's just kind of for your information and we approve those. So if not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by, that is Emily, second by Malcolm. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. I forgot your name for a split second. I am so sorry. Full business, district facility master planning discussion.
Yeah, so I have Chad Alley here. Chad's with Estes and and ICAT. And um, if you remember, we talked about this, I think back in August about facility master planning. Um, board like to, would like to see another proposal. Um, reached out to uh Chad and met with him. I've given you kind of a breakdown of the proposal that he gave us. So you've seen that in board update. He's going to walk you through that. Um, I want to give you, can you answer any questions? Um, yeah. Pressure score, otherwise you're not, I'm going to learn.
Okay. Ain't one still. I'm not gonna tell you that. Oh, oh.
All right. Thanks for having me come in today and I appreciate it. Uh, my name's Chad Alley with ICAT. And I don't usually stand behind a podium, so I'm gonna stand here. Kind of that way. There we go. Now you got everybody. Uh, ICAT's program was set up through the I have Association of School Board about fourteen years ago, a little bit more than that, but probably fifteen. We took it over in twenty-ten. Uh, I Estes and the reason they came to us is we had a the ability to cover the whole state. Um, I remember I was at another company. They contacted us to take Western Iowa and and Estes to take Eastern Iowa. And at that time, I A S B said, no, let's just keep going where we're going. It's working out okay. It was set up for rural districts across the state for the one cent uh sales tax. And help districts identify needs that they had. Uh, not all districts have facility managers. They needed help with how to use that dot of that one cent sales tax and so on. That's where ICAT came really evolved from. And we've been doing, like I said, since twenty-ten. I've been with Estes since twenty-nineteen. I worked for Story Construction for a number of years and I've worked with schools for over twenty years. Which is amazing every day. I think about that. Um, how long it is. Uh, I grew up in Southern Iowa. I grew up in Wayne, went to Wayne in Corning, Iowa. I have two kids. I live in Van Meter, right around, right around Van Meter. Have a son that's in high school there and my daughter goes to Brody Middle School. So I get I get two different dynamics every day when we, when I have my kids at home. So, uh, and it's kind of unique, but yeah, love coming down this way. Do a lot of work with uh school districts in this area. We're working. We actually work with Atlantic right now on their assessment and master plan. Uh, I'll have that list and everything up there, but we've also worked with Preston, Leon. Uh, Mo and I, we're actually building a school right now in elementary in Corning, Iowa. A new brand new elementary. We tore it down and we're building it right now and everything's kind of moving. So that's quickly what we do. I start off with this because Autumn Pino called me two years ago about today. And she said, I need some help. I have two districts that I work with. We have one project's already going. I have another project that's sitting here and we're, we're just spinning our wheels. Can you come out and help us? Just push us in the right direction. And she said, I need a master plan. Said, yep, we can do that. So I went out and I visited with her and through that process, uh, she knew that she wanted to change horses on her design team. So she changed. We went through the process and we identified architects that would be great for her district, uh, because she inherited the the firm that was there. She said, I want my, you know, I want to make sure I do this the right way. I want my team to come in or my board to help identify that because we had two board members on that committee. In the process, we also created a master plan. We also uh did a project. They had some couple funding. That's a couple funding saved dollars they'd already uh allocated. And this last summer, we renovated their nineteen thirty-seven building the best we could. Uh, we really put a lot of time and effort in that project. Still kind of finishing up some things. We're going to finish up some things uh in over Christmas break, just because it didn't work out as quick as we could in two months. So. But I bring this up because she contacted, I think she actually contacted I A S B and I A S B contacted us. Had the same thing happen this week with um shoot, drawn a blank on last week, uh, what district it was and we're have a meeting with them. Oh, um, Central City over by Marion. Whoops, wrong way. There we go. So we've worked with, we've been in two hundred different, two hundred and three different school districts across the state. We've done eighty-nine assessments across the state. Each one of those assessments, you know, we go through a building and I'll talk to a little bit more about that as we go along. Um, and then through that process with those assessments, school districts are now asking, hey, can you help sell a maintenance plan? Yep, we can do that also. And that's part of the ICAT program. Uh, the only thing that costs money through this program is the actual assessment. When we walk through your buildings. We'll spend, you have four buildings here, three buildings in the bus barn, right? Four buildings.
So the junior high school are same complex or joint, yeah.
Yeah, we just use that as one.
Yeah, so three.
Yep, three buildings. Uh, and then we have the bus barn and I charge it to the bus barn because it sounds like the bus barn is maybe needs some help. So we'll just go out and look at it and we'll say, okay.
That good that it's free or?
I haven't driven by yet, so. Um, so what we do is that's the only thing that costs you money. When you, if you decided you wanted to go to a boner for them and or something like that and you needed help. That doesn't cost you anything. That is through your I A S B dues. Also architect selection, we do that. That doesn't cost you anything. Uh, master planning doesn't cost you anything. These are all things that we do for you through I A S B. Today I'm representing ICAT. Okay, so I want to make sure clear. I am not Estes today. I am ICAT. Until you build a project. Then you don't, that's when Estes becomes involved if you want us to. You can say no. Then we move on. And I've had that happen before. But not around. Usually people keep me around. All right, so this I absolutely it is so confusing. I just want you to look at it real quick. That's the whole process. You start at the very top and you're at discovery and learning right now. And then we will either decide, hey, we're going to go this way through identification with the architect. If you have one already on board, yep, we can work with them. Financial analysis, you probably talked to, is it Travis or you work with?
Yeah.
Okay, Travis. Worked with Travis on a number of different districts. Uh, they help us with our assessment. We'll call them and say, hey, what are we at? Where are we at with Pebble? Where are we at with this? Well, as the district passed the revenue purpose statement, blah, blah, blah. All that information is all included. And I brought booklets to show you what it looks like in. But I don't hand it out till I'm done. Because students.
Start coming through it.
They start going through it. And you guys, no offense, might start looking through it and not listening, but that's okay. So I'm going to focus on the first steps. First step here, whoops, went back. This is, okay, well, we'll just look at the top half. That's where we're at. That's what we're going to do with the assessment. We'll work with you on that master plan. If you decide you have an architect you want us to work with, and let me just step back one step. I'm going to go back to when I worked with uh Autumn Pino at Springville. I said, Autumn, can I ask a favor? And I, she said, what's that? I said, can we work with the architect and create one book? Because they'll do an assessment, we'll do an assessment, you'll have two books and they don't melt. They're just, they're two different books. Ours are based on cost, the building envelope and things like that, the roofs, the mechanical systems. They'll look at square footages per student. I said, can we work on this together? I have not had another district that said, yes, we want to do this. That process went so smooth. And then we had one book and I brought the big book today. It'll look better than this, I promise. Because I, boy, and that's, we came up with one book. There's about a hundred and forty pages in here and I have a couple pages that are on that are examples of. This is one of our typicals. This might be, this is us. So you can tell there's a lot more information when you do an architectural uh walkthrough also with this and it's just more detailed. So we can talk about that and come back and tell you more about that. If you do. I already kind of mentioned our uh ICAT services. These are all the things that we do. We help with community engagement throughout the process, the referendum. I didn't, I just touched that with, but that's everything that ICAT does. Now, one thing that I do is I talk too fast. So I'll try to slow down. When we do a physical facility assessment, we like to call investigate. We didn't use to call an investigation. Then we had somebody tell us that feels like OSHA's coming in. So we changed it and said, okay, we'll just call assessments. And what we do is we look at it. We bring in a consultant that helps us with mechanical, electrical. If you choose, uh, and then, and they also look at the plumbing. But we look at exterior, we look at interior walls, we'll look around a room, we'll walk in, for example, this room. If you have a tile, it might be bad. We'll ask that person who's with us that day. It's usually a facilities person. Hey, what do you got going on here? Oh, we had a condensation leak. We just had to replace that tile. Okay, we still mark it just so it's there. It gives you a running list of things that can be done. And then we also grade it. And that grade is either uh something that's urgent and that needs to be done in the first year. And then there's I'm drawing a blank on my other ones, but then it's, it goes one to five years or two to five years, five to ten and then ten and on. So those are the recommended and and I'll talk about those later. But we walk around the entire building, inside and out, basements. We don't go into crawl spaces. We don't tear into walls. We look at it and we evaluate and we talk to that person we're walking with that day. It could be custodian. Could be the building principal. You've done one, right, Julie? I forgot. We did that. That's like one of our first ones. Uh, we talk about, you know, hey, what do you have going on here? Do you have heating and cooling problems? Yep, this room is always hot. This room is always cold. Uh, we look at lighting. We look at LED lighting. Uh, every district around the state is trying to do their best to get to that. And then we come back with a great card. This is what our grade card looks like. I have another one. When we go to the architect. This is just an example. So you see here that we don't, we have one urgent item. It's a roof hatch. I think this was actually, now I remember, this was uh East Marshall. And so, you know, that was something that needed to be done. They had water leaking through it. It wasn't a, it wasn't naturally hooked up. The hooks didn't hold. It was an old nineteen thirty building or maybe twenty even. And then they, we, they had some tuck point issues. So that was suggested as D, uh, but they had some things like that. Other things, electrical upgrades. When you get into older schools, they just they're just, the the gear starts to wear out.
Can you do partial electrical upgrades in a building and stay under the code? Or do you have to, if you upgrade anything, you have to upgrade everything?
It depends. That's kind of, that's kind of a loaded question in a way, but it's not. And the only reason I say that is yes, you can phase it over time. You don't. We did a project once and I'm going to go to mechanical on this in the back of my head, not electrical. Uh, we knew that we had to do the whole building because it was on a single loop system. And we tried our best to get that project done as soon as we could in, as I were a summer. Because we knew that single loop system had, it's the only way they could do, have heat and cooling. Electrical, I think you could probably phase it in different ways. Yeah. It doesn't. It wouldn't necessarily kick in the code is what I'm trying to say. I mean, if we're working on it, they're going to like, let you keep rolling with it.
So just real quick, you go back. So on that, like, we meet with um Ray and Kami, I sit down in November, right? And we started like, what are our needs? And what are we going to take Pebble this year? What are we going to save this year? And you guys have seen that before. Um, that's just our own. Like, that's the ground knowledge or, hey, this is starting to go bad. We have an issue with the last year. We put a motor in. This to me would be one of the bigger benefits is they give it to you with a pretty good cost and we could say, okay, this is something of our own Pebble. Wouldn't always have to be a a referendum item, does that make sense?
The low and the high includes if there's design costs or engineering costs in there. It's also, we, we do cushion it a little bit, so it's almost two years out. So we anticipate a four percent increase every year. It's not going to be eight, but it's going to be close to six probably.
And so like in that, in that theory, we would need to go out and find three contractors to get bids from for each incident.
Well, there's a bid threshold of a hundred and thirty thousand, so it's over a hundred and thirty.
It's. It might be, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Yeah, but it's above that, then you do. You've got to get three bids. You have to have three bids for it. Um, and then, yeah, take the most most competitive bid.
How's that number? How does your number compare to? So
obviously, that's your number to do that. So we, our numbers are based on historical data that we use for projects. So we, we may be building a project at John Deere where we have some costs that we can say, oh, you know what? This is very similar to that. We also do a lot of schools. So we've built two new schools in Waverly, Shell Rock, two new elementaries. We remodeled. So that would be more of a remodel project, something like that. We would take those costs from that remodel job and 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 incorporate it into what we might be looking at here. That's I'm going to guess, like I said, I think this is East Marshall, so we were probably using twenty-twenty-one costs. Twenty-one, twenty-one is where everything spiked. So don't look at that and say, hey, you know what? The pigment's forty-four hundred. It's probably more like.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. I'm just trying to think like from like a long-term.
And that's where the maintenance plan, that we keep getting information from school is just taking help with the tenure plan. Yes. Center for Urban Ban and we're completing one. Atlantic has asked us, can you help us with this? Yes. So they have a new roof they have on that high school. That's, that high school was built thirty years ago. It's the same roof. It's leaking like a sieve now. They said, what's the number one thing we have to do? I was just there Wednesday, last Wednesday. They said, we got to fix the roof on the high school. That's your number one priority right now. And I said, then I would say safety is, security is right up there, very close.
But like the new roof on this one is five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Right.
So like on that deal, we would still have to go back.
Yeah.
The bid threshold is one ninety-six.
Really?
Cause I would consider you guys.
Sees that, you have to go out to bid.
Yes.
Before you phase.
Yeah, you can do that also. I don't.
How do you phase a roof?
Well, a lot of those projects.
It's actually.
It's a party left and I don't know what you probably have electrical. We're going to do half this parking lot and half.
Similar how your shed's being built, you know, if it's patron.
Any other questions on this one? Yeah, let me go. Whoops, wrong way. So then we break it down and we show you the, like a pie graph. We can, we can create any graph you really want. The one thing I had a request was, I'm going to show you the next one. Can you, they said, can you break this one down and show us, you know, uh, what the different levels are within that? So I got to figure this one out a little bit more. Just request it like somebody's trying to make me, I'm like, that makes sense. Why don't we do it that way? It looks like a pie graph, but it's a barcher. Other things we do, we can help with radar, radon, radar. Radon testing, we would supply you with people that you could contact demographic, demographic services. You know, these are just other things we do. NEP evaluation, we do that basically with the uh mechanical consultant we would use. You know, these are just other things we do, NEP evaluation, we do that basically with the mechanical consultant we would use. We typically use IMAG for those because they have one guy that we use, and I bet I've, I think we've done. We'll say thirty in the last five years. I'll bet he's done twenty-five, he just walks through with us, he knows everything, he walks into a room, he's like, boom, okay. And it's simple, he's quick, he's, he's efficient, uh, he's great. So I'm gonna walk through just some of the other things ICAT does with master planning, we do that, I mentioned that earlier. Designer selection, if you decided you wanted to hire an architect and you weren't sure who to go to, we can help you with that. And then prioritization, I prefer to do this with an architect, just because there's a lot of different other. There's a lot of other instances where we're talking square footage per student. I mean, I know that in a kindergarten room, you have twelve hundred square feet, but high school, probably it's eight hundred, it's right around there, somewhere in there. A room. Then again, community engagement, if you decided to go that direction. Current districts we're working with right now, these are just some of them, uh, off the top of my head. Like I said, um, we're finishing up Atlantic right now, I gotta go back next week, help them with next steps. Though on Clemmie and South Central Calhoun, we're doing assessments currently, I take that back, south. Those two, and then northeast, does anybody know where Goose Lake is located? Oh my gosh, Goose, yes, well, no, it's this way, it's right on the curve of Iowa. And it's a small district, the popu, the uh, open enrollment there has had forty-seven percent. So they pull from Clinton to Wyndham.
Really?
Yeah, and McCoka. And they've, yeah, it's, no heads, I love saying northeast of Goose Lake. It's like, say Cardinal, Cardinal building, it sounds cool as northeast. This is one where I threw this in there, we did a architect selection for Cynthia up at. Independence, yep, and this is a, this is a note she wrote to DT. And this is just, this is where we really rely on school districts helping us with other districts. You know, if we didn't do a good job, she's not gonna write that letter. And we spent, I spent a lot of time up in Independence on the, on Friday. I recommend never interviewing architects on a Friday afternoon in the summer. Cause nobody wanted to be there. We did build this, uh, re- remodeled the old high school, that might be where you've seen our names. Our name, I'm sorry, not ICAT. And then I have any questions and answers, but then I'm gonna throw you, this is one of the assessments we did, uh, with the architect. And it's, this was at Springville. So they, we, we narrowed it down to three different needs, immediate need, emergent need, a future need. And that's why I've drawn a blank on the recommendation, recommended and urgent, what we use. But this process went really, really smooth, and I highly recommend to do it that way. And just get one booklet, because otherwise, like I said, you're gonna have two. Any questions I can answer?
So a quick question, I know with ICAT, we have your proposal, what that would cost for the assessment, when you add the architect, is that part of that, or is there, their cost come with?
Their cost would come separate, and what we found was, they will drop their cost because we're doing their legwork on that. And so their cost shouldn't be as much. I can't guarantee what it would be, but I have an idea. On this one, it was, it was roughly thirty thousand for the architect side. Then on top of ours, it was another, we'll say roughly, it was two schools, so I think the total was like thirty-seven fifty, thirty-seven thousand five hundred, I'm sorry. Architects are gonna cost you a lot more, but they do a lot more legwork and pretty stuff. I mean, I made them do the whole booklet when it came down to it. We just added our stuff to theirs.
What's, what's our look at, and do you have somebody in mind?
So I brought you the one, right, I brought you emergent. Since then, I had two others reach out when they heard that we were working with ICAT, so we'll just wait. We've walked that path with, with them before, so they, I think they anticipate districts are probably gonna go this route, and then they'll come alongside, or, or later date an architect's license, and so. Emergent, I brought you their proposal, and then I forget the other one, Chad.
Right.
Bray.
Yeah, Bray.
Bray reached out and they met with us. And again, I told them we were talking about ICAT, so let's, let's know what your board decides at that point. So those are two, I don't have, I mean, I have a connection with the architect at Emergent, but. Yeah, we're willing to look for others, when I, when I went through this in Nevada, when they did architect selection, I think they brought in six? We have to be six architects?
I think you had four, I think we sent it to six and we got four responses, and that's typically what happens.
But they came in and did a presentation to, like you said, there was two board members, uh, superintendent, myself, uh, Billy Grounds.
Yeah.
A team, and they did a presentation of what they would bring to the project, and then selected.
I think we did three last time, didn't we, Cammy?
So my question, Chad, is, when we, so we wanna do the facility master plan, have an idea, we know with some areas. You suggesting architect upfront, or do the assessment?
I do, if it was me, and I, I'm a little, I like this now. Cause usually I don't like to listen to architects, but now I do, when it comes to early on. I would recommend bringing that architect on early, so that we have both and we just like meld it together. It's just, it just, it seems, it goes so much seamlessly, much more seamlessly is what I'm trying to say. We're gonna goose lake right now with OPN. But they're not, they're not working together, they're just doing it their way, and they're gonna say, well, give us your stuff. When we did Springville, we walked through the buildings together. They'd notice some things that we didn't notice, we have some things they wouldn't notice, and then we just collaborated, and then every two weeks, we had meetings. And those two weeks, we would talk about, okay, where are we at on this? It took us a little longer, it took us ten weeks, but that's only because we hadn't done it that way before, I think we could speed it up. And make it easier. But I, yeah, I mean, I know Emergent, they've contacted me, Bray's contacted me, and they said, hey, Bray did Springville with us. And I think they were over at Greenfield looking at something, is that why he was in town?
I don't, they came and met with me, they had reached out, just through board minutes, is what I said, and saw that it was under board minutes, we had it. And reached out that way, and there was another one from Western Iowa, who was a former administrator, reached out and I said the same thing, I said, well. This is where we're at, uh, we meet with ICAT, and he said, we're aware of that process, and if it gets to the point, we'll. Would be interested at that time, so I think there would be interest in it, and then. We have the board to decide, I mean, I think Chad has some background, uh, other superintendents who work with. With companies are always a good resource in how it's going.
We take all the work, we really take all the work off of you, and we send the RFP out, we have a. A call boilerplate, but we fix it to make it more specialized. We, we have a date, they have to send all their RFPs in, you can narrow it down, if we send it to six, you get six, we narrow it down to four, three to four. And then they come in, they interview. Typically, that takes one night, I wouldn't recommend how Goose Lake, we did it for four months. That just took, they did every board meeting, they did one before, or two. We limit those, architects like to talk. And they will say, they wanna tell them about themselves, and they will, it, it just takes forever, so we limit them to thirty minutes. In their interview, here's what we're looking at, here's what we need to do. If you do, in the future, wanna go to a, um, do a bond referendum. They'll wanna know that upfront, but you may get to that master plan and say, hey, we get this firm necessarily, they weren't what they really. You can cut that tie and that contract right there, and go and find another one, or go with your second one. Master plan will take approximately six months. Um, so let's say, we decide to do this over Christmas break when there's no students, and we're walking through. Uh, probably wouldn't work that, quite that simple, uh, but if we did, then you'd probably be done, they would be done by May. In five months, six months, or around that, and then be going into your next year, and you can have everything ready to go.
Six months?
That's, that's a push, I mean, that's a long, that's a long, I, I'm guessing it's probably gonna take more like five. Because they don't wanna take that much time either. But I just don't know, there's gonna be firms, I haven't worked with before, on this. Bray took us. We were done in April, so far.
So taking this master plan to an architect, they got.
So they would help us create the master plan.
Oh, they would.
Yep, they're, they're a piece of that.
Are there charges on their end? For that as well?
Yeah, so they're, so our cost would be what you're seeing right now, which I think that brought up with me.
Eleven grand?
Yeah, eleven. And that includes the mechanical, which they would typically hire their own mechanical. We would recommend, hey, we're gonna use IMAG, and they'll probably say yes, unless it's a firm that has mechanical in-house. And what that means is they have the people that IMAG, they, they have the same thing, but it's all in-house. And there are firms that are great firms that have that. But then there's some.
Smaller.
Smaller ones that don't have the, the mechanical side, which is okay. Yeah. So.
So you go ahead.
You go ahead, I go last.
So, what's the difference between using like, a structural engineer for the architect's position? As opposed to, like, I understand that there's differences in the mechanical, the electrical, the plumbing, from like residential to commercial. But the cost associated with using like a structural engineer for a residential project. Compared to, like, uh, like. Let's say, like, a house, uh, structural engineer might charge you like. Four thousand dollars, five thousand dollars, or like, and, uh. Who are we talking about here?
Like structural?
No, I'm talking about the. The, the company that we're talking about.
Emergent?
No, okay, like, what's the difference between using a structural engineer and using a, what is the name of it?
ICAT.
No, just the, the overall. Yeah, so like, as I said, Roger, like, uh, when, when we were designing a home, we met with a, we met with an architect, and it was like twenty-two thousand dollars. To develop, to, to basically like, just make the plans for our home. We went to a structural engineer, and he's like, I'll do it for like fifty-five hundred bucks. And it's the same house, basically, like, it's identical piece of property, so like, what's the difference between using those two?
So, uh, they're gonna do more, they're not gonna, structural's gonna look and say, okay, the roof. Is gonna be this, you're gonna have to have this amount of square foot, uh, so it can hold snow load. Uh, the architects aren't gonna know that, they just, they're not, they're not. They are looking at, hey, we're gonna put some windows in for natural light, we're gonna put some lighting.
And we take those all off on the final.
So, yeah, structural engineer is gonna be a piece of the package, rather than.
Is that what you guys are doing then?
Nope. We are, we are looking at the building envelope of an existing building and saying, okay, here's the things that we need to do to upgrade. Uh, you've got, you've got a structural crack, so you've got a structural crack going down into the floor. Are we gonna look at it and say, yeah, we maybe, if it's a terrazzo floor or a concrete floor, we might see a crack, you know? Okay, we need to look at that, we're gonna bring a structural engineer to investigate what's, what's wrong in that, what's causing that issue. I just came from home, I had a plumber in my house, cause we have a, our pipe bows down and comes back up, it's twenty years old. He's, he's like, oh yeah, that happens all the time, you're gonna have to clean it out every year and a half, I'm like, okay. Why? Well, then I looked at the floor, I've got a couple of spots where it's, it's moved. Structural engineer will take a look at that and they'll say, okay, you've got your footings here, may have broke, I'm not using this only, but that's, that might be what they're, they're gonna say. So yes, there's some advantages when it comes to a home versus commercial, commercial's gonna look at code. Okay, they're gonna look, they're gonna say ADA compliance, you have to have restrooms, you have to have a number of restrooms in, in this school. Uh, so like you said earlier, if we open up this can of worms, what's gonna happen? But we're gonna plan on looking at that before it gets to the can of worms, before we open it. Does that make sense?
One question, so the eleven thousand on here was for, with the.
With the energy.
Right, is that also included in the maintenance plan? Is that a little bit of the maintenance plan?
We don't charge anything for the maintenance plan, yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna say, yeah, cause we, we're gonna see how far we go, yeah, we're not charging anything for it right now. I have to get permission from IASB if I wanna charge for that.
Questions you guys got?
I don't think so. I'm, I think I'm hearing is, you know, architect, is it needed, is it not needed? It, you know, are we duplicating charges or not, I, I think that's.
So you're really not duplicating charges. I mean, what we're doing is something they would do on their own, but you're doing it through ICAT and it costs less. So we're, we're looking at things that they're gonna look at, but they're gonna charge you more for, is what it comes down to.
So like, if we hand them this, after we receive it, they won't be like, oh, well, we need to do another such and such, and here's how much we're given charged for that.
I, I guess I didn't, what did, did Emergent give you a price?
They did. So they showed us a, a price for the master planning.
Oh, so they didn't do like a full?
He, so I met with them, we walked the building, he just really quick, we talked about some of the emerging. Needs, not only with our existing building, but like I talked to you, Chad, you know, we've got a girls' resting program out, that's. Come up as where we're gonna put them, so was it a remodel, was it an addition? We have places that we left off the last year, but like the auditorium, that's what prompted it, you know, how do we address some of the things that weren't done? And then the idea of this. Instead of us just sitting down and talking, you know, in November, like, hey, what do we see coming? Somebody tells us like, hey, here's something that's gonna be, you need to be thinking the next two years, five years, so as we're. Budgeting pebble dollars, and say, all right, we're gonna have to keep this money back to take on this project next year, does that make sense?
Yep.
So that's where it came from, so that was their initial walk into develop the facility master plan, and they shot some price, and I, I don't have that in front of my.
Okay, no, that's fine, yeah. Our, what we do is a piece of what they do. It's a little more in-depth, when it comes to the structures. Like I said, they're gonna look at it from a different lens, and they're gonna say, okay, you have X amount of square feet for this kindergarten room, you need, it's too small. Uh, Atlantic, for example, is looking at a building that they have, that's so weird. They have the property and they have a Y U C A building on it, and they do daycare there. So they had me walk through, and they said, hey, is this big enough? And I'm like, you've got about five hundred square feet, you can't have more than X amount of students in here. To, to even have the, you know, daycare. The funny thing is, it's attached to their early childhood. So they did this, and it's just like I said, some districts, they do these things, and then they think, whoa, now we're gonna pull out. Well, then they're stuck with a building that's attached to their building, so what do they do? They're kinda stuck, they have to buy it, I mean, when it comes down to it, because they, it's their land anyway. So we're looking at that from a lens of, okay, your mechanicals are all upgraded in this building, it's geothermal, it's about ten years old. Um, all, all the plumbing is new. So I said, you know, you're looking at this, it's a good building, but it's just the classrooms will have to be modified.
So, guys, Jay, I clarify, go, go, Chad. If we bring you guys on board and you bring on an architect, and you come up with a plan. Will we then also have to hire a structural engineer?
Structural engineer, I wouldn't worry about that yet, cause there's nothing really right now to, to even. The structural, unless you have a building that you have a major problem with right now, which I'm trying to think.
I mean, like with the, if we do a remodel.
Yep.
Yeah.
Would the architect be able to do that, would then, we'd have to outsource for another service?
This, what you're gonna do on this service?
The architect do the planning of the remodel?
The architect do the planning of the remodel.
Yeah.
And as we're doing the planning of the remodel with the ICAP program, we're pricing those things and saying, okay. You're gonna, we're gonna do remodel twenty-five thousand square feet, we know that. We're remodeling twenty-five thousand square feet right now, it's about two hundred and fifty dollars square foot, that's, I'm making this number up off the top of my head. So we know this is gonna be this, if we're doing remodel of a restroom, we know it's a little bit higher because it's a specialized restroom. We're gonna have to tear out floor to put, you know, make it handicap accessible. So then, that cost may be a little bit different in the bathroom than a regular classroom.
Take us, two questions, I mean, maybe I'll clarify, so we do this with an architect, right? And we get to the point, we have the master plan, and then it's time to go forward and do a building. You have an architect who's already walked your building and has an idea, you can stay with them at that time, or as you say. No, we're going out to bid for another project, and, and we're just gonna. Seek another firm, all firms at that time, does that make sense? You wouldn't have to stay with them, then develop a plan.
Well, you would never start out, it'd be your information, you have.
You'd have the assessment to give.
So we could use that architect's plan and just modify it then?
But you could give it to whoever's coming, like, here's what we wanna do, this is what's been identified, but they'll have to draw up a new set of plan, like, they're not, we're not gonna.
We're not drawing any plans yet.
Yeah, I came from an architect's office, you're still gonna pay for schematic design development and structural docs.
Yes.
I mean, regardless of whether they were part of the planning.
I guess I was.
That's rolled into your, the, whatever. That's rolled into your, the, whatever your bond is usually, right? When you go to a bond, ICAT can help prepare for the bond documents to go out. The architect will probably, I'm guessing, help with some of the, or ICAT would, uh, the blow-up posters of breakdown.
Actually, that, the architect would do that.
Yeah, the, what, what's it gonna look, uh, potential, what it'll look like when it's done, architect puts those out there. ICAT, I guess, would, I'm assuming we would, we would use them to help with in all the bond material, like, um, we're not, depending on the scope, like, we've talked about, say, pound dollars that we have, there's a building there, um, that you wouldn't have to go to a geo bond. But there are requirements you have to go through depending on what you use save dollars for. So if it's any athletic facility there's a process you have to play out to use save dollars for that. Um, I'm guessing, Chad, and maybe this is too far ahead, Chad, but we're also to the point where there's gonna be a new set of safety uh, code and standards that are gonna be on that. I'm hoping that they've already thought about that and they're walking the building going, hey, to be compliant, this was safe. Here are some things you may have
You can't use sales tax dollars unless all your buildings are meeting these standards at the end of the year. And so there's a lot of schools that are just sitting here right now and they're saying, okay, what do we do? Well, you gotta wait.
Yeah.
Because we, you can't spend a dollar on an athletic complex if your buildings aren't, um, geared right for safety and security.
So ICAT would provide that and an architect would not necessarily provide that for us.
Um,
Is that what I'm
I would, I would, I'm just giving you a heads up that right now, the architect will, yeah, they'll help you with that.
Oh, okay.
ICAT's gonna price it out and say, okay, here's what we're doing. You're doing this, you're gonna have this door come in and we're gonna cut a hole in here. We're gonna put a door here. This is gonna be a, you know, this dollar, uh, we're gonna bring in electrical cameras, things like that to help you get them. That's what we would do after you get so far down the line. Right now, you know, when we do the assessment and we do the master plan, we're gonna come through and say, here are the things that you need to do. Here's the cost that it's gonna take to do those things. Then you prioritize and say, okay, year ten, we're gonna do this. Year one, we need this now.
Chuck, you show them the difference, cause I've seen the ICAT plan, like the book that we can get. So, and you, so you held up the
Yeah, the big one.
The architect, maybe that'll help see the difference, what, what ICAT produces and what the architect would plan with you.
I'm not sure what district you have. This is the big one. And then there's the small one.
So that one would be just ICAT only?
Yeah.
Like what you have and what Malcolm has and what Gina has. Uh, I think I've got a couple in my office too.
No, I'm good. I, I've seen that.
And this is That's the one we did with the architect.
I think our biggest hangup, Chad, is what I'm sensing from the board is why should we get the architect now if it's another thirty to forty on top of what you're providing for the eleven?
Nope, I understand.
What, what is, both sides, a big, big book versus small book?
Yeah, this is more detailed. This just gives you more in-depth what you need.
But we don't have to do that. We can
You don't have to. We can do the eleven thousand dollars.
We can bring the architect on in a year, two years, I mean.
Yep. And if you don't wanna do the master plan now, and you wanna take our book and say, okay, here are the maintenance items we need to look, we can do that.
It's if we're ready to move forward with a architect's guided master plan versus just a assessment, a look and feel where we're at with our next things. Justin, I'm sorry, I summarized what you were at. I shouldn't have done that. I just said, I feel we're sitting at what is the biggest perk with going with an architect upfront now versus going through the process?
Yep, great question.
You know, is it the thirty thousand dollars worth one big book versus eleven thousand for, for this? If we're even at the point where we are ready to bite off that next big I'm, I'm paraphrasing at my best of my ability.
That's my question is are, what if we don't get to the point of meeting the architect?
Yes.
Do we pay for it? See what I'm saying?
Are we gonna Yes, there, that's where I was getting to. Is it money spent while now or not?
To do the master plan. I mean, we can help with that, which is part of what we do, but we don't necessarily do the full master plan. We can help you identify those things, those needs.
Okay. So if we're wanting to do the master plan, which is down below in the other things, you're recommending doing that in conjunction with an architect.
Right.
At the same
At the same time.
I would, because it's, 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 it's more cost effective, to be honest.
Because they're That clears mudding out for everybody, cause it's starting to make more sense now.
To come in and do a master. But you, but if, if we do this, I, like I said, I think the cost to do this, and I can't tell you what they're gonna, they're gonna charge. I know in the past that when we did Springville, it was less than forty thousand dollars total, where I think uh, like I said, I, I, I'm gonna get myself in trouble with architects if I say, hey, you're charged fifty, sixty thousand dollars. But I've, I've seen, uh, when we did Springville, we had one firm that charged sixty-five thousand dollars. They wanted to charge it and they didn't choose them. The other one was, I think, fifty and then Bray came in at thirty. That's how it came up to the thirty.
So I'm not worried too much about the actual figure. I'm trying to figure out do we, is that something we're gonna have to
Eventually, yes.
We're gonna have to occur eventually anyway. So do we do it all at one time, or do we look at what you provide and then decide where we go from there?
In long-term, I'm sorry, one, in long-term, we still stay involved. If you say, hey, we're just gonna do the assessment now. Two years from now, you say, hey, we need to do an architect selection. Can you help us with this? Yeah. You'll still stay involved and we don't, we don't charge you for anything.
Malcolm, what'd you have?
I was just under the assumption that the the architect was going to be the next piece of the project.
Yeah.
And not that we were gonna try to separate it out. I was just asking questions about, like, is there a thing that we can do with, like, intermingling the, the architect with like a structural engineer to say, like, is there a way that we can can we eliminate twenty-five thousand dollars from the process or something?
My guess is a structural engineer, I'm thinking breaker roads, off the top of my head. They're gonna say, uh, we don't do this every day. That's what, that's what I'm gonna guess.
Yeah, I, I get what you're saying. I completely understand.
Because they are geared a different way. They're, they're, they're really geared a different way, especially structural people. There's not enough of them out there either.
Justin, let me put you on the spot, but have you talked to any of the strikes, interventions that have done it, like you had this process started and
Alan Pino and Cindy Phillips, that he mentioned, I know very well, I've sat on we, our careers have just mirrored each other. So we've just have come up and been on state committees and took super job at the same time. So we've just crossed over a lot. Cynthia is from, was a principal of Boca, Iowa. Like, and then she went to Cedar Rapids as a, or no, she went to North Polk as a principal when I was in, um, Nevada. So I just know her well. And Autumn is, as well. I trust them both. Um, I think they're, I think they're great administrators. If they're writing letters, they wouldn't do it if they didn't believe it. You're just being honest.
Cynthia will be doing it that direction, but she lives in Independence and one of our biggest competitors is in Independence and they're gonna make sure that they are involved and not me, which I already told her, I said, I've gotten you where you need to be, so I'm gonna walk away. So.
So I guess our decision tonight is number one, if we want to do the assessment, and that is the eleven thousand dollar on the table, the assessment, which
That is
That is And that is through ICAT, which would be the walkthrough, all of that. And we have to decide if we wanna look at bringing on an ar- architect in conjunction at that same time, which is gonna push this off a little bit later.
I was gonna ask a question. So if that's the case, you said you have the RFPs for an architect. What's the turnaround time for that?
That, that's where I was gonna go next. So if we make that request tonight, what is your turnaround time for an RFP for an architect?
If you can give me a week and a half to get the RFP, just cause I'm kinda busy this week. I can get everything to you and the letters and then come down and probably talk. I don't know if you wanna have a couple of board members with us and break it down to, hey, here are five, six people to send it to, then yes, we'd, we'd have it done before Christmas for sure.
You'd have their proposal back by November?
Yep. I would say like mid-November have it so we can
We'd approve it in December.
Prove it, cause then it's gonna take me two weeks. This is, we're, we're now halfway through the month.
Yeah, no, yeah. So I was, when you said, you know, the selection of an architect or whatever.
Yeah.
I would do that at a special meeting.
Correct.
I wouldn't do that at a regular board meeting. I would schedule a special one if you wanted to do that. You'll see their costs.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right.
You'll know what the cost is going in. You would, you could say at that time, you'd say, yeah.
Well, there is a little caveat to that. They have a great lobbyist group, because they will say, hey, we're gonna send you this and then I'll raise my hand and say, I want all the, uh, costs sent to me directly, cause I'm a consultant. So you can't make your decision based on that's what they'll say, but I will have that information for you. Let's put it that way.
So tonight, for you guys, we have to decide if we just wanna stick with the flat eleven with no architect, which we can approve that, that way, or we can say we wanna approve the eleven and start the process. Give Chad the direction and Justin the direction to start the RFP to be looked at in within the next two months in some capacity, probably, correct?
Yeah. I would say by Christmas, you'll have that architect and that you only have a month to do it.
I'm just throwing out, I'm, I'm trying to wrap the big ball of string.
Yeah, yeah. So we're just saying that we're gonna approve this eleven thousand dollar selection for ICAT tonight.
Correct.
We will have a future board meeting on selecting an architect.
If we, if you guys, we want to go through with an architect for the selection process and do it in tandem. Or we can say, we don't care what Eric and I have to say, we don't wanna do that. We just wanna do the assessment. And not the master plan. We will do the master planning in a year, two years, three years, four years. I think we're to the point where we're looking at a master planning, because that is kind of our next, I'm speaking on my behalf now, the next phase.
So, yeah, we've, I'm, I would agree. We know that there are some needs out there, right? We, this office understands some of our our current facility needs, right? Um, and the timing of when funds become available, we know when that is, right?
Coming up.
Yeah, twenty-six, like, the twenty-six, twenty or twenty-eight year, the, the, the save commitments we have will go away. Right? And we know what our capacity is going out. So we're, we're a good point to do a lot of these projects probably with saves. Um, we may not need to go to a geo bond to do that. That would be good, yes. Uh, depending on what comes out. We know we have some athletic facility needs coming up.
Right away.
So what, what is your opinion? Like, if we say we weren't here and you were gonna make a decision tonight?
Um, yeah, I know what our finances are and capital and save and what we can use funds for. We only have twenty-two million dollars, so forty thousand dollars to get a really good plan to me is not a bad investment.
The, the thing that like that makes me think about this is like, we paid Winterset Municipal Utilities forty-two thousand dollars last month for whatever we get from them.
Yeah.
Which doesn't seem like that much money. Like, when you're talking about a school district that spends, you know, almost a half a million dollars a month on randoms.
I think it seems
In the grand scheme of it, and, and I'm not against the price war. I'm just trying to figure out how, what you guys are willing to digest tonight, you know, and, and
We have this conversation all the time, you and I. Like, you throw that at me on my personal budget, I'm like throw me in the budget, we manage for this, like, to have a really good plan upfront, yeah.
So and I, I guess I'm looking at it for the future of our, our district. I think it is the next step, because I sat, I was the only one here and Kami, when we did this eight years ago?
Yes.
With the building and we really didn't have a good master plan. We just knew we needed to take care of this, this and this. Correct. We were, we were triaging all the issues we had at that time and raised back there as well, and we did that. So we are to a point where it is kind of what, what does the future look like for our structures, our facilities? What is on that radar? What, you know, mechanically, structurally, space-wise, what, what are we looking at? Because everybody in this room has a difference of an opinion on that and it'd be nice to have a better professional scope, look at that. In my mind, it, again, forty to fifty to sixty thousand dollars. I hate to say in an official meeting, that's small.
And we come back into those, and we always bring the update in January. So we meet in November, December, I mean, a chunk of that facility.
Exactly.
We go case where we're covered this, this, this off of our plan, which was urgent needs for next year.
Yeah.
What are we putting away to be able to take on something else if this, if they're not, uh, like a bond or a save effort, but what are we doing with strategically to address upcoming needs? Makes sense?
So, yeah. I was at the, uh, oh, darn it, I just had it in my head. The new place downtown, uh, Saturday night.
Urban Square?
Off the square.
Urban on the square?
Speakeasy. Were you there, Kendra?
I don't, I didn't see everybody. Okay. So I just had the speakeasy on Saturday night.
And conversation, somebody's like, what do you do? I said, well, I work with school districts across the state. And they said, you know, we love driving down to Winterset because it reminds us of home. And they're, they were out of West Des Moines. And they, you know, I don't know if they had kids or not, but they just said, you know, this is the next great place that hasn't been found.
Don't you tell them to shush.
Yeah.
And I didn't say, cause I moved from Des Moines to get out of Vanier, cause I wanted my kid to go to a school that was smaller. And they're busting at the seams. I mean, I, I couldn't move closer to Winterset. Yeah, I would have moved closer to Winterset, cause I grew up on a farm. And I, but this is the best I can get, but yes.
So an actionable item, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wrap this up as a proposal of eleven thousand. We can that is Correct. So, so the only thing we can act on is a proposal of eleven thousand tonight, but we can give guidance to start looking at the architect RFP process. I have a motion by Gina, seconded by Emily. No, I didn't. I got it out of my mouth. Any other discussion on that? Any other questions? So we're going
Booklets for you to look at or do you maintain with me?
So we're, we're approving, or we're, the motion is to approve the eleven thousand and give the direction to Justin Gross to start the process. So I'm getting them all out there. Mister Justin Gross to start the process of architect selection.
That is my motion.
All those in favor, say aye. Sorry.
Sorry, aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chad. No, that, that was a good, robust discussion. I like it. Yeah. All right. Next up, I have Association of School Boards Delegate, uh, Designation and Conference attendance discussion. Kami, are you leading this or Justin?
I got it.
Okay. Kami's usually who I go to for IASB things, so, cause she signs you up.
Conventions coming up, uh, pre-convention on the twentieth, um, for any new board member, which is finance one-on-one, if you wanna take that, Tim.
When is it now?
November twentieth, let's say this one year. The actual convention is on Thursday, the twenty-first. It's good.
It is really good.
Um, it's, it's not just that, there's others. There's, um, finance one-on-one.
I can give you the list of everything if you want to bring that up.
I think I linked, I linked the, uh, information in the pre-convention.
There's some good ones on, they're waiting, they're holding a class about cell phones. I mean, they're doing a workshop on that. Open meeting laws, super heavy, like, there's, there's topics on everything.
There's one on safety and security.
Oh, yes. And there's a, a, a vendor demo area as well, you know.
I'll be actually working with IMAG on that.
So we've got like two or three topics on this. One is we need to appoint a delegate to vote on behalf of the district in their elections and business. Uh, Jared is in the past, but isn't able to this year because he's on the ballot. So we need another board member to, that we will put in as our delegate. You go to the delegate assembly and you cast the vote for the district. So we need somebody to, to do that, who plans to attend.
Just the morning on the Wednesday.
That is Wednesday morning.
Planning to attend as well, so we can register those who want
And get a lunch and then there's seminars in the afternoon, yeah.
As long as I can get a finance one-on-one at some point when it's off. Finance, you know, who will want? I really want
You'll want two-on-one.
So who's planning to attend? Let's get that. So Gina, Emily and Tim and Malcolm, yes, no? Gina, Emily and Tim, so we'll register those. Jared, you want to first?
You don't have to register, I'm already registered.
And then we need the delegate.
Uh, Gina has nominated herself.
I can do that. Emily can do that also.
No, I love that you're gonna do that.
Do we, we don't, do we have to vote on that, Kami, officially, or do we just appoint?
I think it's just all right if we appoint one.
Okay, I'm gonna appoint Gina Robinson as delegate.
And she's agreed to do it.
And the last piece that was with ISB this year is new this year is the student board member breakfast. Jared went to roll this out. He said at the meeting, so, um, yeah, so it is on the Wednesday.
Thursday morning.
Thursday morning. At nine-thirty after the first general session. So we need to go up Thursday to the twenty-first, let me know if that's something interesting, we can work on getting you up there and back. It's at the convention center.
Happy Hall in Des Moines.
Happy Hall.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
You miss school.
Yeah, you get out of Yeah, you get out of school for it. Attendance? Yes, check. She's there.
I think you have to go to the opening session and then go to that as well.
Yep, they go to opening session and then go to the right.
So if you're interested, look at your calendar. I need to know by. How about school?
It's fine.
I'll play around it.
So my kid is going to attend and I will register.
And then you've got Gina and Emily.
I've got Gina, Emily and Tim that are going, will get registered, pre-conference and conference, Wednesday and Thursday. Perfect. And Gina's our delegate. And we can be placed with ten so I can let them know that.
A power scooter.
Hopefully it'll be off by then.
There you go.
That's that, sorry.
That's good. Anything else on IASB? It's a good time. Okay. New business, approve instrument drive.
I thought it was a Cam, Kami caught this one and added it. So yeah.
Yeah, board policy says you need to approve all the fundraisers and this one came up. Just did we approve this flyer? And I said, well, that's going to go to the board for approval. What they would like to do, the other thing that in board policy says that you approve all donations.
I was going to say it's a donation.
And so it's a donation of instruments and the question is. Just, just a heads up to the band people. We don't have to accept an instrument that is not playable. Or would cost more to repair than it would be to purchase new. So.
You can't unload your garbage on do I.
That's the understanding that they are going to use in collecting these, but it's just up here so that the board can approve these donations.
Any questions on those? I entertain a motion to approve the instrument drive. Much by Malcolm, second by Gina. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, bus bids.
Have the lovely bus been here. I couldn't figure it out. It was like. But the recommendation is. Ben would like you to, he did open the bus bids. Only two of the three came in. I think, thank you. He is asking you to approve the one hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and fifty six dollar. Bid on a Bluebird Trantin style bus from school bus sales. That's the winning bid.
And what is the optional lighted school bus and stuff?
He's going to put those on, but as far as comparing apples to apples, that one eighty is without the R because that wasn't part of the bid.
Okay.
He's just letting you know he's going to add those.
Perfect.
Do we need to add the amount or?
You know, you're just approving the base bid of that.
And this is a transit. It's not a full school bus. It's a transit.
It's a seventy six feet bus.
What transit or the, was it stub nose or the regular? I can't remember.
It's the style. There's. There's a, yeah, big nose, flat nose, over the motor, under the mo, yeah.
One's got, one's the flat front, one's got the, I can't remember which one.
Sometimes it's transportation. Kami comes out of pebble.
There are photos of the buses.
Does it come out of pebble?
Safe.
Safe. Sorry, it's the allotment out of safe.
We buy one bus one year, we buy two buses the next year.
So this is the one bus year.
We'll tell you they are getting more spent.
Transit bus, flat nose or big nose? Flat nose.
Uh, Ben, real quick on this one, you told her, Ray. How much did it cost from our last time we did it? Thirty thousand.
That's not even decked out. That's just.
It's up thirty thousand. Thirty thousand will be the last one we bought. Everything is that way.
Yeah.
We, you know, Suburbans. For twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, so there's the proposal with Ben's recommendation. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve? Bush by Malcolm is there second? Second by Tim. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, MSA request for fiscal year twenty four EL excess costs.
Where do you remember? Anytime that you can get. We do it, whether I'm sitting in this chair or somebody else's. That's what we do. The maximum authority that we can request is thirty three thousand, nine fifty eight, fifty three. That's a comparison of what we actually spent and what they funded us for. It's becoming just like special ed. So it's like we have this, yeah, English language deficit spending. So. I need permission from you to apply for the MSA request.
Bush by Malcolm is there second? Second by Emily. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Emergent Public Safety App.
Yeah, so as we continue to look at ways to improve safety, security of the district, this came up, actually Cory brought to our attention. Van Meter utilizes it and shared it with us. It came off of, after the shooting in Georgia. The most recent was in Georgia, correct? Sorry. The staff had the ability to trigger an alarm from their badge that notified police and that. That system ties into everything. It's kind of all encompassing and quickly became like cost prohibitive on a one off. This, how this works is it's on their phone or on their computer. And it allows them to go in and put in five locations that they spend most of their time in. They come in and map your buildings and then there's different things that could be learned. So it could be an intruder. It could be. As many things you want, gas leak, fire alarm, tornado, whatever you hit that. It sends a notification out to the admin and PD. And then the next question is where are you safe? Are you in danger? They click that and then where are you at? And they now put that on their phone or on the computer and it populates the map as it goes. It keeps a running list as well. And they can go back and change it in that event. So. Let's say there's an active intruder comes in, they trigger, we implement Alice and they go from the schools to the rally point. They can then go to the rally point, change their location to say, I'm here, we're safe. The administrators then on the backside can see a running list of teachers who have checked in, who hasn't checked in. And it's real time and it's shared with PD at the same time. So. And I miss Cory.
And there's a, for the worst case scenario, what you're talking about, there's also a chat feature in addition to that where there can be ongoing communication. Via here, so that way if somebody, if they have to go in and look for somebody. Or for example, like they did a test when I wasn't here and I can say I'm off site. And so like then they're not worried about is somebody at Casey's or is somebody at whatever? Because those are going to be some of the realistic scenarios in a real life, like worst case scenario.
It supersedes your, if your phone sets to silent, doesn't matter. It's, it'll push through that like an Amber Alert can go off.
And it pushes through even if your phone's on vibrate or like computer, like volume is off, like it'll, it'll, it'll override that. So Kami, help me out. Didn't we pay for something like this when Dr. Mead was still here? And then it, did it just fall on the wayside? What were we paying for before?
What did we pay for and the reception wasn't good enough?
Gar, yes, guardian night. Yes.
This is. I would, I would say this is that system and then this.
Okay, because I just, we had one and it didn't work. So we, I thought we just kind of dropped it.
Things they had to put on their phone. Right? She had to constantly put people on their phone to do it. This one will be on all school issued computers as well.
Okay.
They can choose to put on their phone. One of the, the guys, one of the salesmen, right? Some people are literally putting these on the phone because of why? What is the most?
Data security. Yeah, geolocation.
Geolocation, right? Those use geolocation. That's why they have a map of your building. So you have to tell it where you're at at that time. Does that make sense? So staff would still have to choose to put on their phones. However, it would be on all district issued computers. And they could do it from a computer as well.
Are the staff going to be able to continue to have phones in school?
Yeah, we haven't got that far down the line, but the intention is yes. Yeah. I don't see a reason to take it away from them for reasons like this. I mean, I already see those kinds of things. Do we need to clean up when they use it?
Yes.
Yeah, I wouldn't disagree. We need to be clear on when they're using their phones in front of kids. And we tell kids they can't, they probably shouldn't be pulling them out in the class. Either. Does that make sense?
Yeah, my daughter.
If we have this, then we can say to the parents once we, whatever is to say about phone usage, that this would be available. If anything were to happen. Yeah, because that's one of the biggest concerns I'm getting.
Yeah. Officer Garrison sat, we sat with the rep and he asked his questions and he said, he, he was in favor. Thought this would be a good investment too, largely because it ties into. There, the police will be on there. You set, on the backside, we set it up. You go and you put it through your admin arm. You put all the PD on there. So it will help, it's going to notify them. They can see the maps of, of the buildings. So, yeah.
So connectivity on a cell phone in our building, is it still subpar, still better? Because that was, I know like in the high school, there's still dead zones for our staff. I just, I'm just thinking if, you know, if we're. Saying safety is on your cell phone, but then just like the old system, you go to access it. And you have no reception in our building. Now our staff phones on the wifi or not, correct?
They're not.
Just the, just the district, which again, I'm not advocating for that. I just want to make sure that if we're spending this. That it doesn't fall on the wayside like we did with the last one because we had horrible dead zones in our buildings.
Connectivity is improved and it'll be on every school issued device.
Yeah, correct. But I, but they're not always having.
Right, but this is going to go off.
Correct. What I'm, but on their phone, if they're in the middle of. Say the library, the library is a dead zone at the high school. They, the, the staff doesn't have their computer with them. They have their cell phone thing that is going to access it, but their cell phone does not.
It's still better than not.
Correct. I just, is there a way, do we need to continue to boost our?
It is improved.
Okay.
The safety grant put a, a boost hour in the high school. It is improved. I went to Matt because we had one staff member who was expressing difficulty. In the junior high gym, I went to the junior gym, said, they said they couldn't get text, couldn't get, I text Matt, I said, did you get this? Yep. So okay, I'm staying in the junior high gym. So he goes, that's a provider. If they're not with, if they have a different provider, that could be an issue. It did address. One provider had issues with, we addressed it, another writer is still.
It's, it's not the financial piece. I just want to make sure that it, that we have the connectivity because we've been down this path and it failed. We didn't, I mean, it didn't work in our, in our, in our buildings. Because of connectivity issues.
It was only on the phone.
Correct.
It was only on their phone. And it wasn't where you could tell them where you're at in the building.
Right.
That's my understanding is it's.
But okay, yeah, control your devices. It's going to allow us to do drills. And actually I think after next year, we can do like when we need just small help with kids.
Yeah. Cause you can set up custom alerts as well in addition to that. So like, for example, they set up at, at Van Meter, they set up a nurse alert. So if I need the nurse, that alert only goes to the nurse. And it says room one twenty one, she can go and it can help in a seizure situation or something like that. So there are customizable.
Response team.
Yeah.
We can set that as a badge tile there too for the building. So Josh can go in. It'll, it'll send it out to that team only. And then it'll say, are you okay? Whatever. You have to note him, what's going on and then also where you're at. So. It's more robust than previously. Yeah, the staff are still going to have to put it on their phone to have that access. All their computers will have it if we do it. Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve the public safety application from Emergent? Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Motion by Tim, second by Malcolm. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. First reading of board policy updates based on IASB recommendations. There's three of them.
There's, this came out this fall. They actually released the cell phones as well, but I've held the cell phones back because we, I mean, they. We'll update them based on our conversation, but these were the other three that they sent out this fall. So as they come out, we try to get them to you and update them as they come. So what I provided you is the, the little recommendation and then the actual ISB sample policies. So.
Anybody have any questions on any, either of those three? Okay, well, I entertain a motion to approve the first reading of board policy updates based on IASB recommendations as presented.
It'll come back again to.
Yep. So we have to do a second reading. So this is just the first reading.
Yes.
Motion by Emily is there second? Second by Gina. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. FFA overnight trip request.
Uh, if the board, as board policy requires that all overnight trips be approved, the FFA convention, they take an annual trip coming up to the national convention. Uh, this is a summary that Kaylee sent me about who is planning to attend. So it asks that the board approve their overnight requests.
As my always question is both. Two chaperones, one male and female, I hope, correct? Usually that's what they do.
Believe so.
Okay. And we're getting it before they go this year. I like it.
It was, it was the officer training that came.
Oh, was it the officer training? Is that what it was? Oh my God. I just remember one was like a month later.
Yeah.
Motion to, is, is there a motion to approve the FFA overnight trip request? Motion by Malcolm is there second? Second by Gina. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, that is, we're up to board member reports. Mackenzie, we will start with you.
So just starting out our past like playing events, as most people should know, we had our homecoming last month. Um, I think that went pretty well. Everybody in our committees, like. For our committees, we just picked out crowns, planned the assemblies, decorated the dance. Um, I think all that went pretty well. We didn't have any of those little hiccups. We just, I think everybody had a good time playing that too. Um, like Mr. Smith said, we finished up our parking spots, things like a week or two ago. Um, we raised six hundred and fifty dollars and that was after expenses. That went to make cable farms as part of our mission for this year. And then some up and coming events. So we're going to take twenty to twenty five leadership. Leadership officers and other student council members to the state conference, October twenty eighth. And that's at Iowa State. And then we also have Meals from Heartland volunteer activity coming up Thursday, November seventh. And that's where we just basically volunteer at Meals from Heartland. We bring like three dollars to ten dollars to help them in their cause. And we usually do it for about two hours. And then last meeting, uh, that was about a week ago. We started our Halloween prep. So basically our, all we were doing is just splitting into groups, assigning duties to. To create dress up days, like fun games throughout the school. And then to win the games during lunch and just basically a bunch of holiday activities.
Perfect. Thank you. Emily. Tim. I'm good.
I'm good. I would like to talk, I would like the board.
You're only going to say once.
So good to my information from Washington DC and I've shared it with Jared. It brings the profile graduate to our. So that it's not just something we look at saying, yep.
There's a board member.
There is a board member.
Make sure we are also participating in the process.
So it, we look at all of the information. And get all that data. I would really like us to move forward with that. I don't, I do have the school district.
Yep.
If you want, I don't, I don't, I just don't know how to.
Mansfield.
Yes.
Yes.
I think Cam has shared the high school with the high school staff. The BLT, so I will, I will get that brought back up.
Okay, no, I will, and I will, I have it all. I will share it with you.
Sounds good.
I just think it's something we definitely need to start. With us being a part of all of the conversations and.
No, but. We made some good progress. There are two meetings already of, of fleshing that out and starting to identify what those look like in different grade levels. And that work will continue throughout the year. I feel good about where we're at with having a draft of that by the end of the year.
And I know our, the only thing I'll add is our external partner who's helping us with that asked me. About supporting you guys and is that, if that's an option, she's willing to help to. Bridge like what we've been doing and like what a board can do too. She's got experience with that. So that's, that option is there. Yeah, so.
Needs like, because I noticed on the, like to get some more credits for the convention, like the fifteen or whatever. But they have activities as.
Yep.
But like, would that have to be during, like with our discussion about this or anything like that, you have to be done during. Yeah.
Yeah.
It would be something to put on the.
So like. Yep, I talked with Gina about it. She said to me, it's, it's just making sure that like as a board, what are we doing? How are we accountable to supporting the profile of the graduate, you know? Uh, access, making sure we have funds allocated to that, making sure.
Uh, access, making sure we have funds allocated to that, making sure they're.
I don't want to make, I don't want it, I don't need any more meetings, and I don't need any more, but I want us to be responsible.
Oh, no, I love it.
I can get that out to you in board updates, so we can talk about that board meeting or update. Yep.
Up to you, sir.
Uh, so I don't pull up on the screen, but it says.
Uh, we're on old school here, we're on. You got, you got HTMI down here, way to go old school.
Apparently my laptop has two and a half hours of time on, I had no more goals.
I'm at seven, I'm, I'm, I'm good.
Starting to print it out for you. That's what my desktop looks like.
Yeah, go to your screen mirror, I, I figured it out after.
Doug walked around and showed us his, um, presentation tonight. And what's he gonna do?
Well, in your, in your displays, under system preferences.
Yeah, go there.
Then you go down displays. Then there should be a buzzer on the clip that says screen mirror.
Or I can plug in the, um, Apple thing again. I can plug the Apple back in. We gotta plug it back in anyway, let's try that. Cause we gotta do that.
Um, yeah, so what I have was, was certified enrollment, you know, that's important, um. We, uh, actually certified that this one is going to pull up. That's not my screen.
That's mine.
And there's watching Real Housewives back there.
Anyway. Moving on, so certified.
There you go, you should be able to hop on there now.
Been funny, she liked another ability that's popped up.
Just glad you weren't on, like, teach Iowa.
Avery, um. Things won't, uh, okay today, those of you that know, she's, um. She has a really difficult airway just because of her size, and so. It took a lot longer to innovate this procedure, it was supposed to be two hours, it took over three because it took like an hour to get a tube better. And throw, so, uh, talked to Doc before I left, uh, the procedure, the actual procedure went well, um. Sorry, I'm trying to multitask and I'm not very good at it, um. So she should go tomorrow, so, uh, if you've noticed, she's been starting to walk in here lately, uh, more sore. Um, her left foot turns in really bad, she got a bad bunion on it, and so shoes are really, rubbed really bad, and so. That's what was fixed, the bunion and then a tendon release to keep her foot from turning, we've tried the. The braces to correct it, sleep at night and just nothing, so that's what today's surgery was, so, uh, appreciate that we go on, apologize. Thought I'd be back in plenty of time and that just didn't work out, so, um, um. But yeah, so she's doing well, so I don't know why this isn't showing, but I'll send this to you, certified roll, we certified today, I've got them in here because I can't read it. So we're down, it's twenty-two oh five is our certified number, right, certified number, we're down twenty-two. But since seats served, we're down thirty-five seventy-five.
So what's our total, what's our numbers?
Total certified, uh.
My computer's dead.
Sixteen forty-five point seven five is the actual enrollment.
Okay.
Which is down twenty-two, and then if you look at the serve, so a total of kids in our district, that's fifteen seventy-four point one five. So compared to last year, the kids were serving is around thirty-five, um. Certified drives the money that comes in, like, that's the money that comes in, and then a resident student that goes out, that turns around and follows, but it's not all categoricals and. Amy's got a really great spreadsheet, so they settle down for us, um, we talk about staffing, it's the thirty-five, like, when I start thinking about how we staff our building. We look at those numbers, so now we have that, we'll update our, our staffing plan, um, for next year.
Is that all elementary school?
That was my next question, where's those thirty-five come from, do you, do you have that breakdown?
Uh, so I'll send you, now that it's official, that document that does grade by grade comparison. It's, I, it's essentially initial one.
Yeah.
In August, I'll update that now with where we're at currently, and then you, you have to track it, kept, you know. If it was last year's first grade to second grade to make that adjustment, um. And then I'll do the average class size, um, where we're, you know, currently I can see that, um. But yeah, it's your graduating one, was last year one forty-eight seniors who graduated last year. And our kindergarten class, um, is one oh four, that right, with PK, under four kids. Um, that first grade class is still around ninety-four kids, you know, it was a small kindergarten class last year, it's still small. Um, so that's, I'll get that to you now that it's official, uh, official. Hopefully this Friday, I don't know what this week, but I'll get to you here coming up, and we'll talk about staffing, so. That's just where that sits, a cellphone discussion update, we see, I sent to the letter. Last week that went out today, we're following the timeline pretty closely, uh, Josh will do the junior high teachers on Wednesday, that's the last group of teachers. Uh, there's a very similar PowerPoint information for kids, we talked about seven through eighth grade, seven through twelve. They'll watch that video, the following day live discussion with some questions around it, and then there's a survey draft, Courtney's something to finalize. We'll send out that out to parents next week, um, probably even for at least a week, maybe two, um, take that feedback. And then our goal is to go to teachers in November, um. With an updated policy and procedures, uh, we're also starting to gather information from other districts who have gone down this path. What's their policies, procedures, how are they addressing it, so we're starting to pull those resources together as well, um. And then we're also talking, uh, around a parent night. Education around, uh, screen time impact on kids, and I think I shared those two different resources we're looking at. Uh, Kendra did some work for us evaluating those two, we're trying to see if we can view them. We can actually get a view without paying for it, to, for making choice, um, and we've already talked to three organizations that, um. Hobbie said that they may be interested, Rovi said they may be, they'd be interested, and then I contacted Dr. Kimball. Um, well, that's just supporting it, bringing out their membership and communicating it, or financially, it's not a huge cost, um. But we're looking at it tonight, I think we're, we're twenty, is that right? It's all on that sheet.
It's on that timeline sheet.
But that's kind of what we're trying to do, is very, be very thoughtful, um, I reached out to. ISBS AI and the AA about whether districts are down this path, I think it's associated with the U, the Urban Education Network, those districts and what they're doing. Um, so again, trying to be thoughtful, and we're still hearing that, um. Uh, I talked to DT about it, he said they're hearing that the legislators intend to bring a bill.
Yep.
That's what, we have a timeline for formulating a policy.
So my, my hope would be to have, uh, board policy review in December, so we'll talk with staff in November, get it to the board meeting for you guys to look at in December. Uh, and then second reading in January, which then could be second semester, it sets you up to run a second semester, um.
Is that something that we're just gonna, you know, put ourselves out there and do this, and then the state's gonna come in, I'm like.
Yeah, so.
They're gonna come in and do something.
They will, you can be more restrictive, you can be more restrictive than the state, you can't be less, and I, I, I share your concern, Tim, so. Why do we put a policy and then have to backtrack?
Yeah.
That's in the back of my mind as well. I think we'll have really good information going in on where it is, um, but yeah, I, I, I thought the exact same thing.
We were talking to Sorenson or someone and seeing what he's hearing.
We have brought them to a meeting before, and he came, uh, Sinclair wasn't able to make it, I think. I don't anticipate him not getting reelected, but I think some of them are waiting till after the election not to be. Here, presumptive.
Here's the problem with waiting. Is you wait and then you have to like, you have to have all this done by today.
Correct.
Like, it's gotta be done today, and you're like, what do you mean today? Like, we're not allowed to like have meetings and develop like public policy and get like family input and. Develop like foster relationship, like, we can't do any of that, or like, no, it's today.
Yeah, I would guess anything the legislature would do. Wouldn't take effect in the next school year.
I, I, I like our process of.
In the circle that I run.
Students, parents.
What I'm hearing from the legislation is there's going, what it looks like it's going to be is that you have to have something in place.
Yeah.
It's gonna be pretty. Hands off is what, as of right now, but it's, you have to have.
Who knows what.
Correct, but that is the early talk from a lot of both of the chambers, and it's, you have to have a policy, have to have a policy.
With the states that are doing it, you know, we're gonna.
But if we have to at least do what they say, I don't see the backtracking problem. Well, if we're at least being, uh. What am I trying, like, if we're thinking future wise and we're at least being proactive.
Yeah, the, the only backtracking I can see would be if we have a least restrictive policy. And then, and then the state would be more than we like.
I, I think the, like, the question's gonna come down, I think, is.
I've talked to a handful of people.
Is it all day long? I think banning it in classrooms is a no brainer.
Yeah.
And it, it just, if you have it during class time, I think the discussion is, are we gonna allow it in passing and lunch, or not at all? That's, I think the real decision we'll, we'll have to make, but I could be wrong, um, and you saw, and when I gave you districts are. On, on either side of that. The author would argue that if you have. Yeah, if you have it at all. Yeah, so if you allow it at passing, or you allow it at lunch, you'll have a, you'll have a cellphone ban policy, um. But I think we'll get good feedback, our staff has given us some good feedback, uh, the survey, I think will give us some good feedback. I'm sure our kids will give us some good feedback, um.
Staff's gonna have to be, I mean, the staff's gonna be the key, because if you have a policy and the staff. You got one staff member that does this and the other staff member doesn't force it, you're gonna have a nightmare.
Spoken on your true educator, Tim.
It's gonna have to have a lot of buying from the staff.
Well, and I think hopefully this process allows us to get there, right, when we've done the feedback and gathered information and we. Not everybody's gonna agree, I will tell you that SiAC, and again, that's a different, uh, set of people. They were all supportive, some of them have read the book.
Des Moines Public Schools banned them.
What?
Des Moines Public banned them.
Yeah.
Like, have you ever been into Hoover at lunchtime?
No.
I have. It's a disaster.
People that complain, they want us to go there for a bit.
Absolute chaos in there at lunchtime, like, it is absolute chaos, I went in there and I'm like. This is supposed to be one of the nicer schools in the world. And it is chaos in there.
The author says in his thing, and I agree, I have not talked to one district who has gone down this path, who has regretted it. They. I have not, I just have not heard one district that's gone down the path that they regretted the decision, um. Again, somebody at Trustboro was my assistant principal when I was in Nevada, he's now the principal out of Falls, this is their second year, he goes, do it. He said, you will not regret it, so it gives you your time back with kids, they, they're talking, they're acting. Yeah, so. Okay, anyway, I think we're on track with the plan I gave you, we could, we're gonna keep running that play, and like I said, hopefully in December we'll have a draft. Um, after a chance to visit with all staff in November, about what our plan is and refine it based on that, so, that's the plan. Uh, I'm on tomorrow, uh, turn around and go back up there, and she's supposed to get out tomorrow, hopefully be back to help out with the cross-country meet. Um, if I will, I'll be out there and then, and taking Friday off as well, sorry, so many, um. I do have some vacation days I need to burn, and Addy's playing in St. Louis, so I'm gonna take her to St. Louis to play, so. That's gonna run now.
Okay.
Anything else for me? She is.
Okay, next meeting, November eleventh, at the middle school. Library. That one will be at the middle school and the library.
Is that our, no, annual meeting's December now.
December's annual meeting.
Yes.
So with that, we actually do have a closed session, uh, pursuant to Iowa code. Twenty-one point five one J to discuss purchase of particular real estate, only where premature disclosure could personally expected. Increase the price, the district would have to pay for the property, and before we go into that, I would like a three-minute, uh, bio break.